All right. Okay, looks like everybody's here, so I will call our meeting to order. I'll mention a little bit of meeting logistics. Anyone who's joining us online, ask you to change your name display to indicate your first and last name. And anyone who addresses the council, we'd ask you to state your name and where you live, and to keep your comments under three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific item on the agenda, we'd ask you to keep your comments germane to that topic. Anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. Once you're called upon, you may make a statement or ask questions, but if you have multiple questions or comments, please get them all out at one time. And if you speak out of turn, discuss non-german topics or go on too long, you may be reminded of the need to adhere to the group expectations. We have some members participating remotely, so I'd ask them to introduce themselves. Carrie?
I'm Carrie, oh, sorry, Carrie Brown, District 3.
And Palin?
Palin called, District 2.
Okay, we could barely hear you, so try to remember that. All right, we need to approve the agenda. Is everybody satisfied with the agenda as is? I know there are some changes to the consent agenda, which we will get to when the time comes. But not seeing any requests for changes, we will consider the agenda approved and move on to general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. We ask you to keep your comments to five minutes. And since I already see a hand raised, a couple of hand raised online, we'll go there first. Peter, I think your hand is up first.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm Peter Drummond, live on Mountain View Street. I do plan to make some comments during the public hearing later, but I want to make those comments be consistent entirely of constructive criticism. So I want to report something which came to my attention very shortly ago. It is, I got a verbatim transcript of a statement that Mike Miller made at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission meeting yesterday after I had spoken and left. And here's the comment. There are individuals that you've heard from, have been a small group of individuals, been very forceful, very direct about trying to stop this process, and a lot of other processes that are going on in the city, including work on Country Club Road to build more housing. So this is a way of clogging up a bigger process. And he goes on for a while, and then he says, "So by mucking up the city planned adoption process, they can stop Country Club Road, and that's the essential. Try to make the city look bad, get egg on their face." He doesn't mention any names, but I was one of three people who spoke, so by implication, he's including me in the group grouping. Apparently Steve Whitaker, me, and Thomas, I can't remember.
Thomas Spikes.
Yeah, as if the three of us are somehow a group that plotted and have this in mind. There's no basis, in truth, to the allegation that I oppose Country Club Road, that I oppose housing in any way. Anybody who knows me knows that I'm a very strong housing advocate, and this statement by Mike is completely unprofessional, and I want the City Council to take note of it when we get to this topic later. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Wade Cleveland. And I see you're still muted. There we go.
Good evening, City Council members, Mayor McCullough, and fellow Montpelier residents. I am sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking, and I didn't know that I just had three minutes, so I will try to keep this under three minutes. I wanted to say that in front of the Christ Episcopal Church, there's these new Big Belly Trash Cans. These things are wonderful because the trash cans that were there before were overflowing, and now it's wonderful. I've seen people come by and use these trash cans, they're great. So whoever's idea that was, that was wonderful, maybe we can get some more of these Big Belly Trash Cans throughout the city. The next thing is the metal art benches that were installed in front of Charlie O's and the bank. These are wonderful, they look great. I've seen people sit on them all the time. I think they contribute to the culture of the city, and whoever's idea that was, that's also amazing. I also want to say that I'm here as a member of the Trash Tramps and the Graffiti Removal Infrastructure Team, who is headed up by Ann Ferguson and Nancy Schulz. These two wonderful people are amazing and a jewel to the city of Montpelier. They keep the streets clean. Every week, they go out and collect about 3,000 cigarette butts off the street and all this trash, and we also paint over all the graffiti throughout the city. I also want to note that this organization was started by Jim Sheridan, so thank you, Jim, you're amazing. We started this project where we were trying to go out through the city and paint fire hydrants that were ugly, and when we started this project, it seemed like it would be easy, but there are over 200 fire hydrants in the city, and so I think the way to approach this problem is, could we ask the people of Montpelier, "Hey, does your fire hydrant have graffiti on it? And if it does, we would love to come out and paint it." So I would appreciate some input from the public with this. And then, I've got 30 seconds left. I just want to say that I was reading some comments on Facebook from Mayor McCullough, where he was talking very disparagingly about Republicans, and I feel that the mayor's seat is nonpartisan, and that the mayor is being very partisan, because there are a lot of Republicans in the city of Montpelier who are very good people and contribute to the well-being and safety of the community, and I think it's unfair that Mayor McCullough commented about us in such a disparagingly way. Okay, that's three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all that work for the Trash Tramps and the graffiti removal. I think it's a great service to the city.
Thank you for the kind words you said about me.
All right. Do you have any more time? Do you have anything more to say, Wade? Because it's, okay. Anybody in the room would like to be heard?
Sure. I'm going to speak about two items. One, a gentleman who I know is struggling with mental health, and yet the paywall you put between police records and the public is really counterproductive. This person showed me three massive welts, this is bigger than golf balls, between a golf ball and a baseball size. He showed, he had been hit three times. The skin was broken, so it broke through the tough layers of skin, and he had been hit three times with the shotgun, the beanbag shotgun, or whatever it is. I don't have direct experience of that ever myself, but it was disturbing enough to say that y'all should be scrutinizing. This city has corrupt police officers, lying police officers and detectives, and you're not getting, it has been that way for the 30 years I've been in Montpelier. So the only way you're going to get to the bottom of it is have some real scrutiny and oversight, and I feel like public records is a key piece of that, because the public can help you with it, but y'all have to have the determination to do it. Y'all need to look into that incident and figure out, you know, why this guy was such a threat, or did we have another, you know, Chad Bean on our hands who just wanted to kill somebody that morning, you know? So that's pretty disturbing. The second is this complacency that y'all have, that housing the unhoused is somebody else's problem, and you can, the mayor has sat up here and lied about Good Samaritan and its thoroughness and righteousness while they steal from their clients, they barge in. It's more like an enclave. Good Sam is run like the Gaza Strip is run by Israel, and it's horrendous. I know people who work there, I've heard stories from people who've guested there. It's not a good framework, there's no dignity in it. And now we're praising, "Oh, we're off the hook." I'm reading the bridge today. "We're off the hook, they're going to open 18 beds." Congregate shelters are yesterday. Everyone in the housing, in the homeless services has agreed, congregate shelters are yesterday. You don't get sleep, you don't get privacy, you don't get dignity, you know, in a bunch of people in a room. And you are forced to endure conditions that are undignified. So for the City Council to have, and that's only 18 beds, by the way, the current unhoused population is at least triple that or more, and we've got no plan, and we've got winter coming up, and you're just leasing out and precluding a shelter up at the Country Club where it's been for the last two winters. So this is your obligation to plan. This is not something you can keep kicking down the road and saying it's somebody else's problem. This is on you, and ethics and morality have to be, I'd like you to add this to your agenda and talk about it publicly.
All right, I'll just respond and say that we do not have a corrupt police department. We have highly professional police department who meet very high standards in their work and their public service, and they have a very difficult job to do, and they do it well, and as I say, meeting the high standards that people of Montpelier expect. And I'm not interested in hearing people come in and lie about them. Anybody else who wants to be heard? Steve, you're not recognized. Anybody else either in the room or online who wants to be heard? All right. We'll move to the consent agenda. There are two things we're going to remove from the consent agenda. One is the police union contract, that's not ready to be ratified tonight, so we'll put that probably to our next meeting. And Country Club Road, Turtle Island lease. So why don't we entertain a motion to pass the rest of the consent agenda, and then we can talk about Country Club Road.
Well, I'll move it. I wasn't going to talk about ratifying the police, I wanted to make a comment about, my final comment about observations.
Do you want to do that tonight, or wait until another time?
I just don't do it tonight, get it out of the way.
Okay, that's fine.
I won't take a lot of time.
Okay, but there's a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, all right. Jim, the floor is yours.
I just want to say, as being finished now with all the negotiations, I wanted to make just some comments about, I have commented about the three wonderful women that are part of the team, so I'm not going to repeat that. I made comments about Kurt last time, but I want to make some comments. First of all, I want to say that all three department heads, Eric, Derek, and Kurt, really know their stuff, really know their department. It was impressive, you know, listening to them. I was proud to be a part with them, I was proud to be a part of the women. But I want to talk about, Eric brings something just a little extra. He has a great sense of humor, and although it was not contentious to police, it was actually probably our least contentious one, although Public Works wasn't bad either, and I want to say that it was our least, because I promised their agent, when I said this was the easiest one, he asked me if I would say that to the council. So I am, I'm keeping my promise, but I want to say Eric's great sense of humor, when he, he has a knack for sensing when it's getting a little uncomfortable, to just totally take that away by his sense of humor, I mean, he made it really almost pleasant to have negotiations with the police, because he really knows when to speak up. He really knows how to diffuse a situation. I have a lot of respect for you, Eric. You made, you know, it was enjoyment, you know, sitting on that with you. And I just want to say, I also want to thank the council for having the confidence and the belief in me to do this for you, to be the one to show up at the meetings and be the eyes and ears for the council, hearing it from another council. So thank you for that. I am proud to say to you all that I never missed one meeting of all of the three negotiations, and we had a lot of them. They all went over two hours, or at least two hours, and even then, sometimes it was with Kelly debriefing afterward. So thank you again for giving me the honor to do that, and I hope I served you well.
Thanks, Jim. Country Club Road.
Yeah, so I just pulled that off just to make sure that we were clear about our decision from last meeting that, hold on, I can't see the eyeballs. So last meeting, we talked about the Turtle Island lease agreement, and just from the minutes from last week, we said that Councilor Doyle moved the council to provide the assistant city manager the authority to continue to negotiate and execute the lease, minus any substantive changes that need to come before the council, Councilor Cohen second, and the motion carried unanimously. So I just want to make sure that there wasn't any substantive changes to the lease, and that it is signed, and final, I just want to make sure that that was publicly said. So if there was anything that was changed in the lease, Kelly, if you wanted to just make a couple of comments on what those were.
Sure. So we do have that final, we do have that final version of the lease in the packet for anyone to take a look at if they wanted to review it. In terms of the terms of the lease, there wasn't anything substantive in terms of the number of years or the amount of money. There was one change to the insurance thresholds, which actually ended up being the standard insurance threshold, which we carried and reviewed with the insurance company, who is VLCT, and so I did note that in the cover sheet for everybody to see. And so what's before you on the consent agenda tonight, or, you know, this item as we're discussing, is to review and authorize the execution of an amendment to this lease. And so you could make any changes at this time if you wanted to. Absent that, what we would look to do is execute the version of the lease as proposed, which the amendment is to include additional space for two more classrooms. And I'm happy to get into any more details that you'd like.
That's all, good.
So, just to be clear, that's the amendment and not the original version of the lease, and that's what's before council to decide on tonight. Thank you.
Counsel, any comments, questions, thoughts?
Thanks for your work on it.
So, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's not been seconded yet, and then we have the Country Club Road item.
I seconded it.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Oh, okay. So that's the motion to approve the Country Club, approve the consent agenda without the two items that we pulled on.
Right.
Did we vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I even checked it off, okay. Next, is there a motion to approve the lease amendment for Country Club Road? Is there a motion to approve it?
I'm moving we approve the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion from members of the council? Members of the public?
Steve Whitaker. I mentioned this last time regarding making sure, recommending that there's an out clause. In fact, because it's very clear to me, if it's not clear to y'all yet, that the traffic generated by Country Club Road and the safety of transporting children up and down that hill to Country Club Road is more than, is more than the capacity of the road in the intersection. So our planning department's penchant for outrunning Act 250 for Country Club Road is going to kill somebody in an intersection, and I'm thinking, it's also going to subtract, the traffic volume of Country Club Road is going to subtract from the capacity of any housing we put up there, because frankly, it's a, it's an illegal intersection with that much traffic on it. So I think there are better places for Turtle Island to build a campus. There are, I'm aware of an offer that, you know, hasn't been considered a better place to put it, but we need, we need to not lock them into a 10-year lease, minimum, with an 18-month notice period, if we're going to potentially need Country Club Road property for other uses, like keeping people who are totally unhoused and have a place that's easier for people to get to with their children, safer for people to get to with their children. So this is just an example of the poor planning for, why we needed a master plan for Country Club Road, but to lock them into a 10-year lease without an out clause is not good, because they need to be free and have the economical flexibility to explore better options before that 10 years is up. And then we also should have a provision for prorating or taking on, taking back the obligation of the $100,000 air conditioning improvement and assigning that to the next tenant. So this is, this is very important, and I hope y'all will pause and think this through before you enter, lock them into it, the city wastes money all the time. But, you know, locking Turtle Island in will potentially put an obstacle in the way of getting what they really need.
Counsel, any discussion? Are you to vote on the motion to approve the lease amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next, we're to item six, fiscal year 26 tax rate.
Sorry, Sarah LaCroix, Finance Director, I'm here to set the tax rate for FY '26. As you all know, we went through a tough budget season, but we did land on a budget. So here, you know, annually, council sets a tax rate based on the voter-approved budget. That amount to be raised to cover, that is not covered by other fees, is divided by the grand list to get you into the calculation for the tax rate. And so in Article II on the warning, voters approved raising $12,278,226 to be raised by taxes. So what you see here is that amount, excuse me, divided by our current grand list. The estimate I gave you back during budget season was actually a little bit higher than what we came in at, because the grand list went up a little bit this year, and so that was good news. So you'll see here that the tax rate is at 0.9788 cents for the 26 municipal tax rate. On the sheet that's provided with the tax rate comparison, that is the City General Fund as well as the Washington County Tax, and that's how that is mapped out to get to that rate, as well as there are other articles that are involved in this that are approved. And then we also are looking to set the water and sewer benefit charge, as well as the sewer separation CSO at 2 cents and 7 cents respectively. And so my request from you all is to approve the fiscal year 2026 municipal tax rate at the 0.9788 cents, and the water sewer benefit charge at 2 cents, and sewer separation charge at 7 cents.
Counsel members, any questions? Is there a motion to approve the request? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next up, item seven, Downtown Improvement District. Hey, Katie.
We're just setting up a little presentation, but this, I believe, has been sent or will be sent to you, so I'll try not to dwell on every slide. I'll give a quick overview.
Yeah, could someone in the back get the light so that...
Oh, yeah, you can't see anything.
Thank you.
So I think most of you are well aware of the things that Montpelier Alive does, or our community and our downtown, but these first few slides, we'll just kind of recap the year and what some of the projects were that we did with, in part with the DID funding from last year. We host a series of events, annual events. I do want to just mark that a new one we've added is a Winter Music Festival Downtown to try to bring more tourists here in the winter, especially for overnight stays, and that's Spice on Snow. We also helped with Winter Fest and Mud Fest, a collaborative with the city, which we hope to continue to kind of capitalize on some events that happen in those seasons anyway. We also fund a number of downtown events that other people host, and try to support the vibrancy that other people bring to our downtown. We have a flower basket program, the hanging baskets that you see out now that are looking really beautiful, and barrels around town. I think this beautification effort is very impactful every spring, it's just what we need to see. We have expanded that program to Main Street. The flowers that you see on Main Street, I think we began that last year, we hope to continue it, and we have expanded on our holiday decor, specifically illuminations, and you know a lot about the Bridge Illumination Project, and we have some beautiful pictures of especially the rainbow bridges that you see now. That project specifically hasn't been supported by the Downtown Improvement District funds, I just want to make that clear, that it's been supported by grant funding, primarily from the state, as well as foundations and private donors. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be supported by Downtown Improvement District funds going forward, it is permanent lighting installation that will need care and maintenance over time. But we always do the garlands and the lights on the lampposts, and that is Downtown Improvement District funds. And speaking of the Big Belly Trash Cans, it was really nice to hear that feedback. That was spearheaded by the Department of Public Works, but we recently submitted for a downtown transportation fund, and the city and Montpelier Alive were awarded those funds to install two more, so we hope to keep those coming. Those funds are also used with some illumination and street lighting as well. Montpelier Alive does a lot of marketing for the city of Montpelier, and we have brochures that we distribute all throughout Vermont through the Welcome Centers, and most recently, we have a marketing campaign that's attached to the illumination called the City of Bridges. And you will see, we're making new lamppost banners, and we're putting this logo that was created by Place Creative, a company out of Burlington, we're placing that on a lot of our assets and materials to market not only Montpelier as the capital city, but as a downtown with a lot to offer, including these beautiful historic bridges. We want to see the Bridge Illumination Project be an economic driver for Montpelier. And we also promote the businesses downtown through a variety of especially digital marketing, as well as ads for all of our events, driving people... as well as ads for all of our events, driving people into our downtown. We support businesses in so many different ways, most recently through construction, also flood preparedness workshops and entrepreneurship cultivation. We recently hosted this workshop, trying to generate interest in people doing business downtown. We really want to help with the effort of occupying the vacant spaces in the downtown. We hope to do more of these entrepreneurship workshops. We have also started an emergency fund for businesses, and we hope to see this grow over time because of our experiencing, experience with fundraising after the flood. We want to be better prepared and have a seed fund for next time, which hopefully won't be tomorrow. And as I mentioned, construction has been a main focus, supporting businesses through that, but also primarily through marketing and trying to make sure that people know that the downtown is open for businesses, and those businesses specifically are open and really need to see the visitation. This is interesting, and it is related to the upcoming DID. We, from one of our grants, were able to work with COBOL Community Data to obtain data on the visitation that we have seen previously. We did a couple of comparison reports, 2022 to 2025, to try to track, especially in the winter months, what our visitation looked like, who those people were, where they were coming from, to better inform our marketing. There are a few bullet points here that you can read on your own, but a couple of things I found most interesting is visitors usually come midday during the week and early afternoon and evening on the weekends, though they must not be going out to lunch because our lunch spots are really suffering. So, you know, I think all of this data is really interesting and important to continue and continue the comparison reports going forward. It should be embedded in our budget year after year to engage in the data collection that can better inform our marketing going forward, where we should target out-of-state, how to get people to come here. There's so much we can find out by doing more of these studies. A few of the upcoming projects that we anticipate working on. There has been talk of the potential of opening a downtown welcome center, so we continue those conversations with the businesses downtown and also studying what other downtown organizations like ours are doing across the state. It's not unusual for downtown organizations to, to manage a welcome center, so we're exploring that potential. We will continue with the city of Bridges' marketing, and as I said, the data collection, and trying to increase out-of-state visitation and draw attention to our downtown. We are working on a relocation and outreach program. It's basically a welcome wagon for new residents to better connect them in our community, to bring them to our events and connect them with one another. As we have learned, resilience can be strengthened through social fabric and a strong social fabric. So we want to play a role in helping to connect people to people and make our community stronger and more resilient in that way. We also want to attract people to live here. If there is going to be development, if there is going to be housing, then we want to play a role in trying to help people understand that they can live here as those opportunities become available to them. And we will continue with our Bridge Illumination adventure. We're going to illuminate two pedestrian bridges with the Downtown Transportation Funds, as well as the Spring Street Bridge. Now remember that this illumination is not just about the artistic appeal, but it's also safety, and we feel like our streets can be safer, especially in the darker months, and also bring people out in the evenings. So we feel like it's a community need, and we're trying to meet that in a creative way. With the Downtown Transportation Funds, we're also supporting the assessment of all the lamp posts and trying to get our street lighting back up and running after the flood and support the city in getting lights to work in parking lots as well. I believe that's a part of the Downtown Transportation Fund grant and the Big Belly Trash Bins. These are some of the projects that continue for us alongside all of the other things that we do annually. Now, what happened this year is our Downtown Improvement District funding jumped from $61,000 to $98,000, and that's because of reappraisals. And at first glance, we felt like we have the budget lines delineated, and we could easily, with the, with more need in each budget line, we could easily just boost each budget line that we already have for the Downtown Improvement District. But I want to make sure that it's understood that what I'm about to show you is very preliminary because we feel strongly that we need business input, board of directors input, and council input, community input, in how these new DID funds could be used. And we've already had some pretty, I don't want to say wild ideas, but big ideas on how that funding could be used. So what we could do with some of this funding this year, I'm actually not sure if I updated these numbers correctly, so I'm going to move to this slide, which is correct. Fiscal year '26, which again, you will, you will have this to scrutinize more on your own. But looking at that column, you see the total income and the preliminary budget stating that we could boost our advertising and broaden our reach, in-state and out-of-state. Advertising is extremely costly. You can't do much with little. So it is such a blessing to have more to work with and to be able to engage with media partners on the next level. We produce a tourism brochure. We need to reprint, restock, and expand locations on that brochure. All the costs are going up for all of these items anyway, so the timing of having the Downtown Improvement District Funds increase seems very appropriate. We really want to continue to push our outdoor economy here and make that a primary focus for visitors, travelers, and people who might want to relocate here. So we have a website called Adventure, All Around Adventure, that we had started a couple of years ago. We'd really like to continue to build that out. And then continue with our photography and videography to capture a lot of the, especially outdoor adventure, adventures that can be had here and be able to put those in our website, put those in our brochure. And then I put in the visitation data collection that I feel is so important to have every year to help inform all of that marketing. Holiday decorations, there may be some increased maintenance costs. The garland cost goes up every year, so this accounts for what some of those projections might look like for next year. Planting and maintenance, because we've expanded our plantings, and then we've also found opportunity for more barrels of flowers. You may have noticed what we placed in front of Rabble Rouser most recently. All of that comes at a cost, and we want to continue to be able to have the flexibility to meet some of those needs and beautify as we go along throughout the year. We hire a waterer who you'll see around, Carolyn Scribner, and her cost goes up with more projects that we do. So this figure accounts for those increased costs as well. Streetscape and public art. We always make a contribution to the graffiti removal, but in listening to the public comment about that, I feel like there, there's probably more we can do. We make a very small contribution to support that effort, but that, that takes an incredible amount of volunteer time. We're, it's amazing that we have people who are doing that kind of cleanup for us. So graffiti removal, as that need has increased. Trash bins and benches, we have definitely lost some benches in the flood. The, I think there used to be a budget line in the city budget for purchasing benches and trash cans, and I haven't seen that, the CIP fund, in the last couple of years. It was $10,000. So we really need to work to replace and, and make some of those units better, Big Belly or not. And assuming that the Public Art Commission continues, we would like to continue to contribute some funding for them, especially if the, if the city funding stays at zero or is smaller than it used to be. That $5,000 can go a long way for them. So again, those are preliminary, but on the right-hand side, you'll see a few of the big ideas that have come up in conversations about this DID funding. And if it's not this year, then maybe it's something we can be thinking about for next year. Welcome center contribution perhaps, downtown landscape assistant, downtown design coordinator overseeing more arts projects and streetscape beautification, business membership and support manager, having somebody who's attending to more of the businesses. We're seeing a lot of business on Berry Street right now, being able to have a little extra support at Montpelier Alive as we continue to grow. These are just ideas, but I think it's important to get that impact, so we'll spend the next number of months doing a lot of outreach and revising this budget if needed, but also we can be thinking about next year and big ideas for next year. So this is the budget that I propose gets accepted this time, based on what I've observed the need and the growing needs to be, and having the extra funds to work with. And I guess that's the end of my presentation.
Thanks, Katie.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any questions? Happy to take questions.
Any questions?
Can I offer a comment? Just that in my professional capacity, I have the opportunity to work with all 24 downtown organizations across Vermont and just really want to say, Montpelier Alive, they're all great. Montpelier Alive is really great. We're really lucky to have them as an organization for your leadership. I also just want to acknowledge, like, July 3rd was tough. And like, I just wanted to say, like, I think a lot of people were thinking of you, and Montpelier Alive and all the work that went into that, and I think you handled it with grace, and next year, the sun will be shining, I'm sure.
Thank you, I hope so. And a big thank you to the city who supported that event, all departments.
I just want to say, I think that this is really, you know, I think our downtown is hurting, and Montpelier Alive does a lot to bring vibrancy that's really needed and feels like money that's very well spent.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I've started attending the Montpelier Business Association meetings, and I see your interaction with the business community, and I think they do depend on Montpelier Alive, and I just thank you for the good work you do, particularly under this tough couple of years that they've had. Getting better, but slowly, so thank you for what you do.
See, I see one hand up from the public. Wade?
Oh, I just wanted to say, don't overestimate your return on investment for advertising because the best type of advertising is word of mouth. If we make a beautiful city, then people will come. We don't need to tell anybody.
Well, I think that's a great point, and I, the thing that I hear people who don't, people from outside of Montpelier talking about the most these days is the illumination of the bridges. It's great. It, you know, they're beautiful, and it really catches people's eye, and, and I think it's, it's been a great investment.
Adrian?
I'm just going to follow up on the marketing. It's, it sounds like you did some benchmarking with other cities, and I just had this conversation with someone last week about marketing and thinking about Stowe and, and the history of Stowe and Waterbury and those, looking at those cities, and you pick up a magazine on an airplane and you see an advertisement for Stowe. And so what is, I mean, have you done the comparison? Like, do you know how much they spend on marketing compared to what we do? Like, I'm just curious.
I don't know how much they spend on marketing, but I do know how much an ad in like, a big magazine at an airport might cost. It can cost up to $20,000 for like a page. One page in seven days is $2,000. So that's why we don't advertise enough in seven days, and I hope to expand on that because I do think that's a good pool of people to draw upon. But it's a great question, and it would definitely be worth looking into what all the organizations spend. I also know that the Chamber of Commerce told me at one point that their budget for marketing was $8,000. And our entire budget with the DID and all the other money we pull into marketing is about $40,000 a year. So, you know, we're really, I just think that there's, there's a lot, not, not pressure, but a lot of focus on our organization broadcasting even the region.
I still have a follow-up question, and I don't want to scope creep on this, but I'm just curious if you have this data. So we talked about, one of the goals is to look at increasing, you know, the vacancy rate for the hotels to get more people into the hotels. So do you have a baseline of where we are in terms of like hotel stays? And do you have a goal through your marketing campaign to increase that goal? Like, do we have an idea of what that looks like here in Montpelier?
Yeah, actually, we've been working with Capital Plaza to try to gain some of that data. And it's one of the grant requirements is to try to get our finger on that pulse. I have yet to meet with the Anna Montpelier, but I know that Capital Plaza is down by 32% from, I think that's what they last told me, from before the flood.
So there's some improvement, opportunity there.
Look at it as opportunity.
Opportunities, alright.
And we do have, we do have some goals, but I haven't put them into percentages. That would be a good thing for us to do as well.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
So thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Katie.
Appreciate your support.
So are you asking for the council to approve this? Because you mentioned possibly...
Yes, I think this is the preliminary budget we should approve, and if there's a major adjustment, we can talk about that. But I think we'd be looking more into next year and using this year for input on that increase.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this budget?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, Steve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Katie, do you want to make a pitch for your event tomorrow night?
Yeah, sure, thanks. Tomorrow marks the anniversary of our 2023 flood. And it's really hard to let that day go by without acknowledging it. So though we were very swamped with July 3rd and July 3rd planning, we were able to throw together a small opportunity for people to come together and reflect, but also to think about a hopeful future. So the Commission for Recovery and Resilience and Montpelier Alive, as well as the Montpelier Neighbor Net will be coming, and the city of Montpelier, Jack will be there, will be coming together at the Skinny Pancake Patio tomorrow, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There'll be live music, but we'll make a number of announcements. And there's a walking tour that begins on the Langdon Street Bridge at 5:00 p.m. tomorrow, led by Friends of the Winuski, Michelle Braun. And it'll be kind of an abbreviated walking tour with some opportunity to reflect and discuss some of the projects, the resilience projects that are happening and dam removal. And so then we'll gather on this, on the Skinny Pancake Patio, and in the case of rain, we will move inside to city center tomorrow, July 10th.
What they were saying on Eye on the Sky before I came over, on my way over here, was we may get a little rain tomorrow, but nothing, nothing biblical in scope.
Crossed.
Thanks so much, Katie.
Thank you.
Steve?
I just want to mention a couple of things you've probably heard before. It appears that Montpelier Alive might most effectively, or more effectively than city council or the Restrooms Committee, the business community needs to have or has a lot of potential to contribute to the discussion. Today, I learned that even the laundromat here on Berry Street has ceased allowing the public to use that restroom. Shaw's restroom is, is out of order. So we need, y'all need to consider keeping City Hall open... of order. So we need, y'all need to consider keeping City Hall open potentially all the time. You know, locked offices, but those bathrooms could and should be available. There's lots of folks that are round the clock needing restrooms, and that's a secureable and a well-camera surveilled place. It's very possible if you only just had the will and determination to do it. But the business community could also be part of this discussion. They, oh, I want to comment.
Steve, remember, what we're talking about is Montpelier Alive's budget presentation.
I know, okay. The flowers put cynically right in front of, all in front of lavatories are so close together, just to, clearly just to displace the people that were camping out all their panhandling, you know? That's just, that's the way we do our, you know, passive-aggressive little, you know, chase them out of town. And we've torn down the bus shelter, we tore down the gazebo. Now we're gonna put flower pots so, so close together where they, you know, they sit and ask, you know, for funds. I think that's just atrocious, passive-aggressive, cynical. It is part of the Montpelier Alive budget. The electrical, I'm glad to hear Katie mention electrical maintenance on all these lights, because that's gonna be a growing problem, and I don't, and then I noticed we have, you know, a lamppost which we're, they're contributing to re-establishing that's in front of the American Legion, that's total cracked face and leaning and ready to fall on somebody or a car. And our electricians, we have city electricians that could have hooked up these bridge lights. You know, they're out paying, paying top dollar for private electricians. This blurred line between what is government role and what, what is the value of Montpelier Alive's space in City Hall? What is the value of their space of our banners on our poles? You know? And is this factored into the calculation? And it should be. If not, it should be. That's, City Hall space has got to be very expensive, you know? So restrooms, oh, I was talking to a woman. She won't walk around Montpelier in her nice shoes because of the conditions of our sidewalks. You know, it's like advertised, we can advertise, Montpelier Alive can advertise, just say, bring your, bring your hiking boots if you need to suffer our sidewalks.
Thank you, Steve. Next up, we are up to item eight on the agenda, the second public hearing for the Historic Preservation Commission. Hi, Meredith.
Good evening. Meredith Crandall, Planning and Zoning Administrator and Staff for the Historic Preservation Commission.
And I'll just say now, before you start talking, I'm open, the public hearing is now open.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so I think everybody was here two weeks ago when we had the first hearing. Pretty simple. When the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance was first drafted, the number of members wasn't actually set in stone. It was set as anywhere between three and seven, and that is made for fluctuating quorum over the years and made it difficult sometimes to have a quorum to get business done. And so the HBC would like to have the ordinance amended so that there are five regular members and two alternates. And one of our current members, Commissioner Durham, has volunteered to become one of the alternates, and there's currently an open seat. And so we would ask that that would also be the other alternate seat. And so there's two motions, separate motions to get those two things to rank on the cover sheet.
Thank you. Are there any comments from any member of the public? Either in the room or...
I have one brief one.
Okay.
A key issue in our city plan is citizen participation, and I think this idea of packing three public hearings together, you know, opening, close with no effort to get anybody here or to get them engaged, is really an example of what's wrong with citizen participation. It's, you know, open and closing public hearings. I was prepared to prepare my three-minute speech and read it on every public hearing, just so you would have to suffer with how cynical this is, you know? This multiple, these aren't public hearings. This is, this is a council, and you're pretending to have public hearings, but no effort has been made to find out who are the stakeholders, who's interested, who would, who would actually want to come to these public hearings. So let's call it, call it what it is.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to be heard? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. And now, having had two public hearings, it's in order to, to do two motions, one to amend the ordinance for the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a motion to do that? And is there a second? All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. And the second motion is to, is designation of the membership, as you discussed. Is that right, Meredith?
Please, because it's, that's just a standard role of the council and their ability to appoint members.
So moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you. We have done that. Meredith, are you up for the next two also?
I am.
All right. I will open the public hearing for the E911 Lyra Lane designation.
So another one of my hats is the city's E911 Coordinator. And as the E911 Coordinator, I am required to be the one to make recommendations for naming of roads after consultation with the E911 Board. The power to actually name those roads is in the council's hands. In this particular case, what we have is a, it's currently a private driveway, and it will become, and has become extended to be a driveway that is going to ultimately serve three different structures and three dwelling units based on the approved zoning permit for construction on a rear parcel. Under the city's E911 ordinance, it therefore needs to be given a private road name so that the new numbering can be assigned by myself and in coordination with the E911 Board. After conferring with the property owners and residents, as you see in your packet, they requested that the new private road be named Lyra Lane. It's actually in, the Lyra Lane, L-Y-R-A. It's in recognition of the original family that lived on this, what will now be a road, their family dog. And everybody is happy with it, and so I did not give you alternate names. This is already checked out with the E911 Board.
And do, do we need to do two public hearings for this, or just one?
My understanding is this one just needs to be a single public hearing. It's not an ordinance change. It's a, but the, the ordinances, the state statutes say it has to be in a public hearing. So as with the prior hearing and the one coming up, these have all been properly noticed as required.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who'd like to be heard on this?
I was involved when we first started the 911 system and created the road naming and ordinance system. Montpelier, I'm shocked to find, we're still out of compliance with 911 addressing all across the city. Not all across the city, but in certain areas of the city. So I'm, my question is, are we renumbering houses or are we just renaming the street? Are we numbering the houses according to their feet down the street? And, because some people push back about changing their house number. And secondly, where's the plan to complete our E911 compliant citywide? Because it's pretty exemplary or typical that we're 30 years out of compliance on something like this. That's a public safety issue.
Thank you. Do you have an answer to that, Meredith?
So I took over the role as E911 Coordinator last April, when Audrey Brown retired. So I have done my first annual mapbook review that I did earlier, I want to say it was due the beginning of last month or the end of last month. Can't remember exactly. So I actually have a, having done that, while I was doing it, looking at the specific errors that they called out, and I was giving them input on, in on correcting, I developed a full list, which I'm happy to provide to you later, of all of the streets that I saw that were out of compliance. And I will be working with Fire Chief Libby to figure out the priorities, because it is a complicated process to renumber a street with, you know, very, very specific notice requirements to all the people who live on that street, as well as coordination with the state. So yes, we're developing a plan as, by having just taken this over, essentially. It's a work in progress, but I'm happy to provide you that list if you would like to see it.
I don't feel the need to see it before you're ready, before you're ready to take, take action on it, but, but thank you.
Those will come, you know, you'll be notified about those. It'll be part of, you'll be involved.
Thank you, and thank you for embodying the professionalism that we expect of our city government. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to be heard on this topic? Peter?
All right, yeah. Meredith, I'm glad to hear that they're, you're working on a plan. One of the things I think that's going to be really important, because people are going to be resisting changing the numbers of their houses, because it ripples down into their stationery and their, all kinds of things. So I think that this is a good example of where the city needs to communicate really clearly, not just have public hearings, but explain to people why this is important, why the, the inconvenience that they are having now could pay off in saving their lives. And I really think that better communication of these things to the public is the key to their success. I think we would have a garage and a today, a garage today and a convention center if that had been communicated more clearly to the public about why that would, that would have been important for the light blood of the downtown. So communication, communication, communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Seeing no other members of the public clamoring to be heard, I will close the public hearing for the Lyra Lane 9111 designation and entertain a motion to approve the designation of this as Lyra Lane. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It's, motion is carried. I can tell you, my son, who also had a dog named Lyra, is very pleased to hear that this was happening. Next, we will enter the, we will open the public hearing for Homer Haven designation, item 10 on the agenda.
So, again, still here. So similar situation, a little bit different, though. There is not an existing driveway in this location, but there was a subdivision approved approximately a month ago. It's got a subdivision permit, and the proposal, assuming it all happens, will be to create a new shared driveway between two parcels that will serve four different homes. And so in this instance, because it hasn't actually been created yet, you're giving your approval. I wouldn't actually pull the trigger with the E911 Board until it was actually constructed and moving forward. But this way, we've, we've got this process going so that when they go to build and they put in the driveway, I can give it an E911 designation for ease of sending emergency personnel there, even during the construction period, should there be a need. And you can see in your packet, they came up with a few different possible names here. The Homer Haven, which was one of the developers' suggestions, is the one that has the least potential conflicts with area towns, and so that's the first choice that I would recommend, is the Homer Haven. There is a second choice, which I think was lovely lane, that's also in here, should you really have something against Homer Haven.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard about Homer Haven?
I'd be curious to hear, is there any history behind the name Homer?
I was gonna ask that same question.
So Mr. Cohen from Downstreet was, thought he was gonna be able to beat that. Here we go.
Homer Haven is in reference to Homer Heaton, who was the person who established the hospital there at 9 Heaton Street, which is now Washington County Mental Health Services Building.
Great, thank you. Oh, and for the record, may I state your name?
Yeah, sorry, Stephen Cohen. I'm with Downstreet Housing and Community Development.
Great, thank you.
I'm really glad to know that.
Yeah. All right. Seeing no other members of the public asking to be heard, I will close the public hearing and again, entertain a motion to approve the designation of Homer Haven.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Meredith.
Thank you.
Next up, we have adoption of the Montpelier City Plan, and we have Mike Miller here, and we will, we're scheduled for a public hearing, so I'll, right now, open the public hearing. And Mike, you've got the floor.
Yeah, I guess if, being a public hearing, I guess we'll open, take the public hearing, and then I can provide comments afterwards.
Well, why don't you give the overview?
Okay. So this public hearing is a follow-up, Mike Miller, Planning Director, from, boy, I want to go back now to June, when we had a public hearing, and June 11th, I believe, we had a public hearing, and we made changes to the plan that were significant enough for us to go through and send comments back to the Planning Commission so they could review those comments to determine if they were in compliance with 4302 as required under state law, which the Planning Commission did. We sent you those comments, and we are, and we made those changes. All changes were made by June 20th, which was Friday of that week. So we made extra effort to make sure there was plenty of time in advance for public hearing notice to go out for another public hearing. So that's why it took that long to get back here from the early June public hearing. So we're now here in July 9th to go through and take public comment on the city plan as it was amended and as you have before you with the date of June 20th, 2025.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any members of the public who'd like to make comments? Peter Kelman?
Thanks. I, on May 26th, I sent all of you some comments and suggestions about ways to improve the plan. And I don't believe any of those changes that were made since the last time the plan was brought up, so I want to bring those up to you again, because I think they're all pretty important. And contrary to what Mike implied in his comments about a small group, this member of the small group has been looking for ways that the plan could be. of the small group has been looking for ways that the plan could be passed, and that housing could be built on Country Club Road. And so that, and, however, I think that there are problems with this plan that are fixable if you guys, the city council, tell Mike he's got to do these things. All right. First, quality, pre-pub quality control. This document must be professionally copy-edited for clarity, accuracy, and style consistency. That is not the same as proofreading, but it also needs to be proofread. Now, Mike is like, oh, well, proofread it at the end. Okay? Let's hold him to that. Tell him he has got to proofread it, but before it's proofread, it's gotta be copy-edited. For those of you who don't know what a copy editor does, a copy editor reads a document, makes sure that if a term is used, it's always used in the right way, it's always spelled in the same way, it's always, and if it, and it's defined if it needs to be defined. They make sure that dates are correct, they make sure that, that's, that paragraphs are logical, they check, they fact-check. This is a very thorough process. Mike has said, oh, it would cost us, you know, thousands of dollars. Well, that thousands of dollars should have been built into the process, because to put together a city plan that is as inconsistent as this plan is, is embarrassing. And it, not as embarrassing, but it gives people who want to use the city plan to stop building, to, to oppose things, it gives them an opportunity, because they can find things in the city plan that contradict each other. Secondly, and Mike has agreed to this, I think, I heard him agree to it, all of those maps, many of which are quite old, need to be dated, and the source needs to be provided, because there are going to be more recent ones that come up. You need to know, when you look at a map, particularly so-called interactive maps, they're not really interactive, but these maps, they're, they're gonna be engraved in stone, and if they're 10 years old now, they'll be 18 years old later. They've got to be labeled.
Thanks, Peter. That is your time. We do have, we do have your full comments and writing, and we're not planning on adopting this tonight.
Well, I, I, okay, Jack, if you have my comments and writing, then I would like you guys to discuss my comments at some point, because I have made, I have spent more time in this plan than any of you, and yet I make, I make this, I send these, I, I don't expect a response, but I would like to see you discuss the things that I've suggested. I've made very positive, constructive criticism about how to make this a better plan, and Mike has blown this off again and again and again.
Any other members?
Steve? This is Mike Miller's plan, this is not the city's plan. This is a, again, cynical attempt to chase a rabbit into a growth center application, which we're not gonna get. We flat out aren't gonna get a new growth, a growth center to cover Country Club Road until next year under Tier 1A. And that's because the lack of planning, y'all's lack of listening and implementing planning, so that's on Miller, that's on you, but you're not gonna get it. So, Act 181 totally changed the framework, and our plan does not in any way, the, the role of the city plan in regulatory affairs and in fighting court challenges is entirely different under the new Act 181. And this plan doesn't even come close to meeting the requirements that would be necessary for such a, a plan or a challenge. So, we need to look at it from that way, we need to not just be chasing a, you know, a pipe dream of a landlocked, traffic-constrained parcel, you know? And the public, I'm gonna read you from the testimony I gave yesterday to the committee. "I think the process is somewhat, the commission thus far needs to take a step back." This applies to the Regional Planning Commission, applies to the City Council. I believe statutory that, okay. "It's like the dies cast, you're gonna rubber stamp it despite multiple, three different people gave you detailed criticism end to end of this plan. It's the epitome of a plan that should be disapproved, and y'all are facilitating, you're doing a real disservice to Montpelier by running the process this way." There, this was a charade of a public process. It disenfranchises in how the Regional Planning Commission is handling, the contrary to statute. I read into the record the resignations from the Chair and Vice Chair and, and Stan Brinkerhoff, and I read into the record what they said about how Mike Miller has screwed, entirely screwed our plan process, how people, and I've heard it from people on the Conservation Commission, I've heard it from people on the Complete Streets, I've heard it from people on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, this, you, you got a real problem in our Planning Department, and you refuse to address it, you refuse to talk about it, and now you're trying to approve a plan that is defective on all fronts in order to chase a pipe dream for a growth center application? It's flawed, it's really flawed, and you really need to start taking some action. I applaud Peter for telling you to, to talk about it in public and quit trying to, you know, I know that, it's absurd to hold a public hearing when people spend months and months and years learning about this stuff, and then you limit it over three minutes? That's, it's disgraceful that y'all, I mean, you could at least open it up to the five, you know?
Thank you, Steve.
Not really.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Jack, can you hear me?
Oh, who's, oh, sorry, is that, there's a telephone?
This is, it, it is, I was not able to get on via the Zoom, this is James Moore.
Ending in 698, okay, that's James Moore, okay, go ahead, sorry.
No, no worries. I just wanted to say, it's been quite a process, and I hope that the city has learned, and I think the city has, I've heard the city council say, we want to do this differently next time, and I think that's great. I think it could have been a process that engaged more folks in the city. I think Mr. Kelman's got a number of good points that could make the plan more accessible to folks moving forward. And I also think that adopting the city plan is a step forward and a step in the right direction for the city. There's a lot in there, in addition to the Country Club Growth Center, that is directionally positive for the community, and a lot of folks, even if not as many as, you know, some historical processes, but a lot of folks have been engaged and emailed you all or spoken up at meetings, and I think to not move the plan forward would be a disservice to our community at this point, and I think I've heard a number of city council members talk about moving forward with the plan, and then, you know, it's a working document, and you gotta plan your work and work your plan, and I hope that's what happens with this moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, James. Okay, now I'll close the public hearing, and Mike, it's back to you for, to lay out where things stand.
Yeah, I just wanted to read one statement that I had on the process here so far. So I wanted to comment briefly on the delayed regional approval from last night and to discuss the options for tonight. So first, let me point out that these objections to the plan that we've been hearing are disappointing and frustrating, but they don't impact me personally, at least not financially. Those who will be affected, who are affected, are residents of Montpelier, and most specifically are builders. Our developers have been asking for relief from Act 250 costs and the time required for permitting. These are small builders, and if they create more than nine units in five years, then they need to go through Act 250 for all additional units, even single-family homes. So Act 250 is a significant barrier for them, and one of our growth center applications that had been planned was to expand the district into a broader area around the downtown to facilitate this infill development, and this is, we need this in the city plan. And we have the deadline, that's one of the deadlines that we're talking about for September, not just Country Club Road, but also through Act 250. These delays that are being created by Peter Kelman, Thomas Weiss, and Stephen Whitaker put that application at risk as well. The efforts of these three have been extended and pronounced, and we have addressed many of their concerns over the past months and sometimes years. Peter points out that he has been commenting and participating in the process since 2018. We probably have more of his comments on various public input matrices than anyone else, and we have incorporated nearly all of these. The plan is better for his input, but regardless of all the changes we have made, nothing will be sufficient to satisfy his endless list of complaints. Yes, he would like the copy editor to look at the plan, he wanted to copy edit the, copy edit the preliminary drafts, first drafts, public hearing drafts, and final drafts. I'm convinced that even if we did that, he would still not support the document. As you know, we did price out the copy edited, and we provided that to you, and it would cost $12,000. You decided the price was not worth the value, especially in these tight budgetary times. And, and he continues to what end? "Thomas Weiss was strongly opposed to the online document web format because it was no longer, would no longer be accessible in the future for research and could be difficult to use for someone, for certain people. At his early request, we assembled and added the archived copy, making improvements throughout the hearing process to that document. Although we have made significant changes to accommodate his concerns, he continues to oppose the adoption and now regional approval, to what end? Steve is Steve. His agenda is simply, is simply to stop progress, to embarrass the city, and to embarrass me personally." He says, "It was to make, make sure the process is followed, and yet we have been over backwards to go beyond any reasonable requirement for plan adoption. We have added extra hearings, added extra time for review. He simply creates new objections and finds new gears to pour sand into. Steve is loud and speaks very definitively, and that confuses and convinces people who do not know better. In the least, like last night, it gives people doubt and a reason to delay what will be inevitably an approval, but delay works in his favor. I have a limited amount of time to get all of these pieces done." So he is succeeding in his effort to kill progress on Country Club Road. And I can't even call them nimby's, because Country Club Road and the infill housing isn't even in their backyards. This is simply obstructionists for the purpose of obstructing. So how do we push back? In a public hearing setting, I have few avenues to do that pushing. What CBRPC, grant agencies, and others are going to need are louder voices, or at least more voices, to stand up and say enough. They have been heard, their ideas have been considered, and they've either been incorporated or not. And you are the elected officials who represent the city and represent the viewpoints of a majority of the community. I know you all volunteer more than your fair share, but I need some of you to help show up where these obstructionists are and to say enough. In fairness, I did not ask you to appear in last night's CBRPC board meeting, but I will ask you to be there in August. Your voices carry a great deal of weight, and people will hear you. The comments of James Moore last night carried the day for the subcommittee, but he was not available for the full board hearing. So I ask that you all consider being those voices. I will do my best to give you a heads up on opportunities, not for me, but for our neighbors, for our builders, and for anyone who wants a home in Montpelier. Steve, Peter, and Thomas are winning the battles, but coming together, we can win the war and get not only this plan, but the grants and program applications approved to help the city move forward. So, I just want to say, options for tonight, as I sent you last night, we have the option to close tonight's public hearing and continue the hearing to August 13th. In that way, CBRPC will have the time to warrant a special meeting to approve the plan. We will have the assurance that the RPC asks, if the RPC asks for statutory changes to the plan, which are not expected, we will have the opportunity to fix them before adoption. This is the safest path. Option two would be to be bold, to vote to adopt the plan tonight. Put that question to bed now. And then, show up at the CBRPC meeting and tell them to approve the plan. Our staff has reviewed the plan for conformance, CBRPC staff has reviewed the, the plan, the subcommittee reviewed the plan, and these experts have unanimously found no deficiencies. Whatever technicalities these three will try to exploit next month will be minor. I do not anticipate any issues, but we need you there to say enough. The worst-case scenario is the CBRPC requires an amendment if we adopted it tonight, and we would need to re-warrant hearings starting at the Planning Commission through the council to fix this issue. It would be highly unusual for CBRPC to do this, but our existing plan that would be adopted tonight would be in effect while that new amendment is being made. And I'll stop here to let you consider next steps, but I want to take a minute after this is done, whatever your choice is, to either move the, continue the hearing to August, or whether you adopt tonight, I need to take a minute to preview a conversation we need to have maybe next week, and if that would be okay, I would like to speak after you guys make a decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So what you're laying out is, is two alternative courses. One is to adopt the, the plan tonight, the other is to wait until, I, I understand the issue is that we need to provide a written summary of the comments to the Regional Planning Commission?
It's not something we have to do, it's the Regional Planning Commission themselves, it's all work they're doing internally. It was a request of their, a member of their full commission to their staff at the CBRPC.
And so they're not gonna act to approve it until they have that?
Correct.
And so that's what you characterize as, as the safe course, to wait until they've done that before we adopt ours?
Correct.
Thanks. Folks, what are your thoughts? Jim?
I got a few thoughts. I would like to know if, seeing how you wanted us to possibly vote for this tonight, so I'm assuming that you have put the two plans and made them exactly the same?
Yes. As, to the, to the best of our abilities, we have as carefully as possible, and we proved them, two people have proved to make sure that they are, the PDF version is the same as the storyboard version.
Okay, so when we, if we adopt this, we are adopting them equally?
Yes.
Okay, I thank you for that, 'cause I asked you to do that, and I appreciate that. I did watch the meeting, I watched it on YouTube today, and I just have a couple of comments on that. You're, you're an employee of the city, Mike. These people, whether you like them or not, are citizens of Montpelier, and I found it kind of like, a little insulting. I mean, it's up, you know, we are gonna get insulted, that comes with the territory.
Us, you?
That comes with the territory. You know, we don't go insulting the citizens, because we put ourselves in this position. Peter Kelman is a neighbor of mine, he's two doors down, I know he's persistent, but he's a good person, and I just found it insulting how you talked about him, I found, and Thomas Weiss is the son of Alan Weiss, who was a city counselor who served with me many years, and who was the superintendent of the schools when I was in high school. And I admired him a lot, and I admire his son. Thomas is always very rational, gives comments in a very logical way, and again, he's just like his father, his father raised him well. I just felt, you know, you don't go insulting people who pay your salary, that's just not right. And I'm gonna tell you something else I didn't like what you said. You made a decision for me, and I don't like people making decisions for me. I heard what you said, oh, the council's all behind this, and the Planning Commission's all behind this. I have never expressed that I'm behind this. So don't go making decisions for me, I'm fully capable of making my own decisions, and I don't like that. I've been doing this for a long time, I've done more for this city than you'll ever do in your lifetime, and I don't want to be told what my decision is when I haven't made one. And I've already gone through this with your boss, and so I'm gonna talk to her about it again tomorrow. I don't like to be disrespected that way, and that's how I felt, when somebody makes a decision for me that I have not made myself, and so I'm not happy about that, so that's what I got to say, and I will not be voting for this plan to- So that's what I got to say, and I will not be voting for this plan tonight because of how I have feel, I felt that you have disrespected people, you've disrespected me. I appreciate that you matched the two of them up, but you need to learn how to toughen your skin like we have to. And I've had people in my face a lot more aggressive than people have been with you, and you just need to learn how to deal with that.
I'm going to shift the process. So for the plan, you've obviously worked on this for many years, and I think what James said, this is a live, living document. And so when I, when you work on plans, strategic plans, community plans, it's something that is alive and that it's, you know, once you approve it, it's not going to just go on a shelf and sit there and rot away. And so in my mind, I would love to be forward-thinking and really, you know, be solutions-oriented and not, you know, have all this conflict and really think about how do we take this plan? We all know it's not 100% perfect, but it's never going to be perfect. We cannot, you know, look in the face of perfection and just have that, you know, stop us. And so I really want to look at this plan and know in our hearts and our souls that it is something that we will continue to work on, that the next iteration will continue to make it better. We'll have, you know, maybe more community input. We'll have, you know, libraries full of people. We'll take that, you know, effort now that we know what we've done. How can we continue to make it better? It is just in the world of continuous improvement. Here where we are, how do we make it better during the next iteration? So I just want us to think about being perfect and thinking about progress and where we are, and how do we continue to continue, how do we continuously improve this progress and this process? And how do we think into the future about, you know, community participation and, and input, and what that vision may look like, and how do we achieve that? So I just, I want us to really think about that and know that it's okay. Like, it's okay.
Thanks, Adrian. Carrie?
Thank you. Yeah, so I agree that if we spend all our time waiting for this to be perfect, we will never be able to approve this plan, and that I would, I prefer any route that lets us move forward. My question is about the process of the regional approval versus the city approval, and I just want to clarify that I think the standard way this goes is the city would approve it and then send it for regional approval and then get a yes or no, and I'm wondering if that is correct, or if it's more typical for the regional approval to come first and then the city approval?
So it'd be more typical to have the city adopt the plan and then have it go to the regional plan for approval? That would be the more typical route. We just, we chose, or my recommendation was to go the other route simply because we knew the amount of objections that we were getting, and if the regional planning commission decided they wanted to make a change, we would have, then have the opportunity to incorporate that change before we adopted the plan. And that was why.
All right. That's, that is helpful. So that still leaves me with a question of what's the best route for us to take, whether we want to, since the regional commission does seem to have some questions that they want answered, and, you know, to respect their process and to respect their judgment that they want to hear more, do we, do we let them do that and then adopt this plan? If, assuming then maybe they make changes, or do we go ahead and adopt it and then respond to any changes they ask us to make?
Thanks, Carrie. Ben?
Thanks, Carrie. That's, those are really helpful questions, and I actually, I didn't have the opportunity to watch the hearing, unfortunately, but like I, I guess I have a question about process. I mean, my understanding from your email earlier today was that the subcommittee recommended approval to the full commission, and that there were questions about in the 90 minutes in between the pre, whatever, the, the first hearing and pre-hearing and the full commission meeting, that there wasn't the opportunity to put the comments in writing and respond to them? And so what we would be waiting on, or what they're waiting for, for their next meeting is to have all the comments that were in that first meeting with kind of responses to those questions. Is that correct?
Yes. And Christian, is there any specific questions for the regional commission on that process?
I guess what, you know, my kind of main takeaway from that is that the subcommittee reviewed it and made a recommendation to the full commission for the plan's approval. And, you know, the kind of worst-case scenario that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the worst-case scenario here is we could say, you know what? We're going to take that leap of faith, vote to approve this plan, approve it at the city. It goes to the meeting that's already scheduled. They review the comments that came from the, and say, no, actually, we don't approve this. And, you know, and so if that's the case, then we would go back and presumably address their comments and fix it. So, you know, just more broadly, if I could, I, I have concerns about the tone of the conversation around the plan, you know, that ideally, plans like this are supposed to be hopeful, aspirational documents. It doesn't feel like, for a variety of reasons, this process has resulted in that, but I absolutely believe that we need to be moving forward in the way in which we work together to implement this plan is an opportunity to elevate the civic dialogue that we have. I actually agree with Steve that it's deeply disappointing that we don't have more participation in our public hearings, and I would say frankly and ironically, it's a direct result of the tone of the comments that we do have in our public meetings. I think we'd see a lot more participation if there was a lot less vitriol. Having said that, I'm really excited to, you know, potentially move forward on the plan, and I would be willing to make a motion for its approval tonight.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second the discussion, if I could. I'm, I'm just a little concerned. I, I mean, I don't know what questions the commission has, and...
I have the transcripts, so let them know.
But I don't. And I don't know that we can deal with them tonight. Maybe we can, but I, I wouldn't want to send a message to the commission that we don't care about their requests for corrections or comments or explanation by simply passing it and saying, take it or leave it. Maybe that's just me, but it sounds like it's a sort of in-your-face response to their That said, I, I want to move this thing forward, but I, I don't want to do it in a way that should come back and bite us.
I mean, I certainly, so I appreciate that, and that would certainly not be my intention or interest in sending that message, right? I don't think any of us would want to, would do that. I mean, I view the regional planning commission as a really key partner in the work, and we need to work with them collaboratively. You know, I'm basing mine on the, the recommendation of the subcommittee to review it and to the full commission. I'm assuming that, you know, the, the comments or questions, it struck me as a kind of process issue of them not having written responses to the comments. I respect what you're trying to say, and it's certainly not my intent to be in the face of the regional planning commission. I guess what I would just say is if we could approve the plan with humility, and if they in fact come back and say, no, there are some substantive problems here that need to be worked out, then we could humbly work those out.
Now, we have someone from the regional planning commission here. Would it, would it be out of line to ask you to comment?
Sure. Do you have specific questions? Christian Meyer, Executive Director for Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission. I don't intend to speak on behalf of the regional planning commission or my Board of Commissioners, much less any individuals, but I'm happy to answer questions about what, what took place last night and any specifics you may have that might help give you a little clarity.
I don't have any specific questions. I thought it would be, might be useful if you could, you know...
Walk through what I have, and sure.
Yeah, exactly.
So we have a subcommittee that reviews municipal plans and holds our hearings. That's a subcommittee that's been referenced tonight, the municipal plan review committee. I think that at 5:00, may surprise you. You don't usually get much turnout for those meetings. This is the first time we've had members of the public with extensive comments, usually several members from a planning commission talking about their plan and the process. So, you know, we've had a habit of meeting directly before our full court commissioners' meetings, and there hasn't been an issue there saying the same way that you hold your hearing here tonight before making a decision. However, what we ran into last night after that subcommittee had discussed the comments on, that were brought up, had, you know, come to receive answers that they felt were sufficient. They did make a recommendation to the full board for conditional approval based on the city adopting the plan itself. During the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, there, we did not have a full hearing, and members of the public were given a truncated time to express their concerns and comments. And staff had, did not have the time necessarily to develop a report on those comments from the hearing that they could review and reflect upon. And so although comments were expressed about the, any failings of the plan itself, the, the comments really were the failings of our own process and that it wasn't provided that transparency to the full board commissioners to reflect on those comments that were received during the hearing. And I certainly can respect that, and they chose to postpone or table the motion and plan a special meeting in the next two to four weeks to take the item back again fully informed.
One of the big topics of discussion before the council has been the question about doing an online version versus a print version. Is there any concern that doing an online version would not comply with requirements of the statute, or that it would not be eligible to be approved for, for that reason?
I am unaware of anything in statute that an online version of a municipal plan would disqualify Montpelier from approval.
Thanks. Folks, any other questions that people have? Carrie?
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate that input. I, I, I'm feeling, I don't really have a question, but that I would like to proceed with approving, with adopting this plan. It seems like our, this, the standard course of events would be we would adopt the plan, we'd send it to the regional commission. We flipped that because we, we were trying to move quickly, but now I think we're a little bit more in sync with a regular schedule, so I'd like to adopt it. I have a great amount of respect for whatever the questions are that the regional commission has, and, and I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to address them if there does turn out to be something that, if they do turn out to not approve it and we have to make some changes, I feel like we can do that. But I'm ready to vote to adopt this tonight and then send it on to the regional commission.
Any other thoughts from members of the council? We've already taken comments from the public, and the public hearing is, has been closed.
Can I respond to what Miller said? Generally?
We've already taken, the public comment is, the public hearing is closed, and so I think we're, we're at the, we're at the point, we're at the point of council discussion. We have a motion and a second.
Jack, you said, you cut me off and said you were not going to vote on this tonight.
I did not anticipate we were going to be voting on it.
Well, then you need to let me have, you need to let comments be made.
I, I will accept comments because of that. I'll, I'll take you and, and Steve.
I'm just going to make this very short. What Mike Miller said about my comments is incomplete and basically untrue. I have made very specific comments that were incorporated, yes, great, over the last eight years, but the, but the suggestions that I have made have not been even considered. For example, Jack, you just asked whether or not the online version would comply. I have never asked, I have never claimed that the online version wouldn't comply. I'm merely warning you guys that an online version is going to cost money and staff in order to keep it going, and we're facing tough times, and both the, the people who have been working on it, their job, you guys almost cut their jobs this summer and then reinstated them. We don't know what's going to happen. This thing is going to age poorly. Now, Jim just asked whether or not the two plans were equivalent. What he didn't ask is which is, are they both the official plans, or is only the online version the official plan? Because I have heard Mike say only the, the online version is the official plan. That would be a mistake. You guys need to really drill down and ask the questions carefully. The, 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 the subcommittee did not ask good questions, and, and when one of the people in the subcommittee repeated back her understanding of what Thomas was suggesting, she had misunderstood what he'd said. He had to clarify it, and, and, and I had to clarify what I said, too. They, they, this subcommittee was not experts. Mike said they were experts. They were not experts. They were, they were ordinary people who, who represented their, represent their town. So you, you can't be claiming they, they have expertise. Now, there are people on the whole commission who are experts, and they are the ones who said, mostly for procedural reasons, but we want to hear more. The second thing, the third thing I want to say is this, that Christian didn't mention it, but this very same person in the subcommittee who had the misunderstanding said, I thought you said to us, Christian, that staff could make recommendations to the city about things that they wanted to have changed. And he said, yes. And then there were a few recommendations discussed. None of them were as major as the suggestions that I've made. I am not trying to slow this down. I am not trying to prevent it from being voted on, but I, but I am strongly urging you, the city council, to hold Mike Miller's nose to the ground and make sure that he does keep it a living document, that he will make an affirmative and effective effort to, to engage the community, that he will do all the things that he is asking you to not, not pay attention to. I made very specific comments, and I have not heard a discussion, have not heard a, a, a thoughtful discussion of the online version. I have not heard thoughtful...
Thank you, Peter. That is your time. Steve?
Let Mike Miller sit up here and ramble for as long as he did and deceive you is unconscionable when you limit us to three minutes. The subcommittee that met yesterday does not have any capacity to review a plan. They basically, one of them said, it looks better than our plan. It's wonderful, it's colorful, it's got, Matt, you know, it, there's zero capacity. One person appeared to be falling asleep, there were only four. This is not a plan review capacity for a municipal plan, especially a web plan, especially in the new Act 181 framework. A legal analysis is required. The regional planning commission director yesterday said, we're not sure whether all of those comments that came in are within our jurisdiction or not. They don't even know what they have jurisdiction to ask to be changed or to require to be changed. So there's a, that's a capacity issue. Y'all have capacity issues, they have capacity issues. Christian's growing into the job, but knowing exactly what they can require us to change. Our plan is deficient. This isn't personal about Mike Miller. He runs a shoddy process, but this isn't, he's, he's not responsible for whether we have the integrity to put a good plan together. This plan needs to be much better to hold up under Act 181. And the specific, I would ask you to read the transcripts, the specific detailed input that I put in on the participation process, on the regional public safety dispatching, on resilience, what, what Peter and, and Tom put in. Those are things y'all should have heard, and you should have required Mike to account for every one of them. You can't just let a planning commission that has rubber-stamped everything that Mike puts in front of him. You need to basically replace some people and, and bulk up the regional, the, the... You need to basically replace some people and, and bulk up the regional, the, our planning commission and direct them to rework this plan. It's, it's, Mike should not be driving the bus. He should be staff, support staff to a planning commission. So the ambiguities of the RPC purview are critical. A legal analysis is required. Read the resignation letters. Read the letters of the people of why they resigned from that housing committee, and talk to the folks on those other committees. You will realize that Mike is part of the problem. Okay? Because the full commission did not hold the public hearing, that's one of the big ones. The law says the regional planning commission shall review and shall hold a public, and, and after a public hearing, after a full public hearing. It doesn't say you can delegate the public hearing to staff or to a subcommittee. So that's one of the issues I raised, is that I think the public hearing has to be held by the full commission, because you're counting votes, and you need to be able to persuade the most people who can hear your arguments. But now I'm asking you to read these transcripts from yesterday's hearing. I spent all day on them, and, and do your own damn due diligence.
Thank you.
But also don't trap us in an adopted plan, which is going to, well, okay, go ahead and do it. Here's a note we're including with Mike.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hi. Timson District 1. I'm a planning commission member. I didn't plan on speaking this evening. First thing I wanted to say was, I hear you, Jim.
Leave them all on, please. Thank you.
I'm, I'm getting interrupted, I feel like. Should I continue?
Yeah, just go ahead.
Should I push through that?
Just, just.
I, I do find it challenging to push, to push through. I'll just make that note.
Okay.
Mike Miller has been a great teammate in this process. The plan is good. This is a planning commission product. We own it. I, I own it, and I won't speak for everyone, but I think that most people would say that we own this, we own this document, and it is good. I wanted to address what Jim said, because I hear you, and at the same time, what you're experiencing this evening is what we've experienced at every single meeting since, at least, I've been on board, which is November. It's a lot. And I just wanted to say, from the community of folks that I connect with, which is a large portion of our active community, mostly parents of kids in, in, in our schools, is that people want this plan approved. We want to move forward with housing in the city. It is hopeful. The, the document is good. It is hopeful. And I think if we were to approve it, there's always opportunities for improvements in the future, but it really sets us on a path towards a more populous and great city. And that's it. Thank you all for being there.
Thanks. Thanks for coming out. All right, Jim?
Peter, I wanted to address something you said that I want to correct you. I actually asked Mike if the two plans were equal and we would be adopting them equally, and he said yes. So I did address that question, and he said yes. So the two plans, it's not that one's going to favor the other. They're both going to be on equal foot.
So just to clarify, the official and unofficial version, the, the reason, this really comes down to a, a legal thing, is if at any point a discrepancy is found, and for whatever reason that happens to be in a, come up for a court or any, any case, that's why one of them is labeled as the official version. It is labeled as the official version because if a conflict is found, and as we said, we have very carefully, but all of you know, if you make two identical documents, what's the chance of a comma getting missed in one and, and not in the other? And sometimes a comma in a legal setting is an important thing. So if there is a discrepancy between one and the other, which one is the official? The official would be the online, and that's, so, but both are, both are part of the plan and the plan, so.
Thanks, Mike. Council members, any discussion, or are we ready to vote?
I just have one, I just started meditation at this, but like, just from the point of process, I want to return or reiterate something that Carrie said, which is the kind of normal protocol for this, or the way that this would typically work is would, a municipal body like us would adopt a city plan, and then it would go to the regional planning commission for review. We flipped that originally to try and expedite the process, but if we, we actually find ourselves in the place where we can go to what the typical process is, by starting it off by approving the city plan and having it go to the regional planning commission, and do so with all humility and, and in a spirit of collaboration with the regional planning commission, should there be changes needed.
Thanks, Ben. Are we ready to vote? I think I'll, I'll do a roll call, because it could, Ben?
To approve the plan?
Yes.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sal?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Palin?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We have approved the plan. Thank you all for your work at, at getting through this. It's, it's been a lot.
Thank you, Mike. Apologies, Jim.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll have to meet with you afterwards and have a discussion, have a conversation with you about it. So.
All right.
Ashley, can I say something?
Yeah.
If you would apologize before, I would have voted for the plan.
I wasn't given the floor. I.
That was my concern, was I felt I was disrespected, and I felt that I was.
It wasn't, it wasn't my intention to, to, obviously to do that. I, I obviously know your, you have all of your rights to, to vote in whatever way you want in to approve or not. And that wasn't my intention when, when I was speaking that way.
Okay, I, I, okay, I, I just, I, I, I'm fine with the plan. I just felt, you know, want, I felt disrespected, and I wanted to stand up for myself.
And my, my apologies.
Okay. Except, all right, I'll accept that. Thank you.
My, my quick statement, I want, just to preface, for next week, we need to schedule some time, I'm thinking perhaps next week, work with Mayor and Kelly, to discuss upcoming work plans, and this is a little bit of the reason for me giving a little bit of a nudge to this plan, is I currently have a number of critical items on my agenda and not enough time to complete them at this point. I've lost Josh, who was a key player. That position is vacant, and I'm looking to hire somebody. That takes time. We have a $10 million community development block grant, D R fund application that has to go in. Pre-application's next week. The full application is in August. That's for Country Club Road. And then we have what we've talked about, and I mentioned and referenced earlier in my comments, which was the growth center expansion to help cover residential 9,000. This is important for our builders in the building community. That has to be in in August, in order for us to meet, this, by statute, the program is, is toast after September, so we have to be in. And we were going to do growth center expansion for Country Club Road, also with TIF. So you can start to see the, the number of things that are piling up, and the delays that have been happening with the plan. We've been trying to do as much as we can to accommodate as much comment and give as much input, but we have run out of runway, and that is our issue. We're continuing the zoning amendment work, so there's an opportunity to shift gears on Country Club Road with new state laws. There are pluses and minuses to continuing on our path of doing the growth center in TIF, or shifting to doing CHIP. There are advantages, disadvantages, but it's not something on the agenda for tonight. I just wanted to preface that, to go through and say, we're going to have to have this conversation next week, because if, if we stick with our current plan, I'm going to have to really figure out how to get the growth center applications all in order and put in, and still get the CDBG application, which is a significant grant application. So for me, I need direction from you to know, should we shift gears, or should we stay the path? And we'll have to have that conversation hopefully next week, because.
Kelly and I will get that on our agenda for Monday. Thanks.
So, thank you. I just wanted to give the update on that.
All right, folks, it's now time for our break. Ten minutes.
I will call us back to order. We are up to item 12 on our agenda, and that is interim zoning changes. Mike?
All right.
Welcome back.
So, Mike Miller, Planning Director. So what you have before you is a set of interim zoning changes. So interim zoning is an opportunity for the council to use emergency adoption provisions that are in statute to amend state law, to amend our regulations to address issues that come up while we're in the process of amending our zoning. And so the Planning Commission during the public hearing process took a lot of testimony on housing, including a number of comments that really weren't city plan related but were more zoning things that we could fix. And the Planning Commission said, as soon as we get done with our hearings, we will start with a quick review of the zoning and see if there are any emergency things that we can put through to help clear some of the back, not really backlog, but there are a little, a number of little things that were hanging up some critical housing projects that we could make some changes on. So they moved forward, the Planning Commission moved forward with a meeting, and a number of developers came in and gave a bunch of ideas. And then Planning Commission split them into two groups. We got a number of them that are quick, we can do them, they're non-controversial, let's get those to council and let's make that approval. And then a second set will be worked on throughout the, will be worked on throughout the rest of the year to help get the, to help make a permanent set of adoptions get done. So what you have before you are a set of changes, and I don't know if you want me to roll through them, but the quick summary is we made a change to urban residential, which is Country Club Road. At the time, there was a chance we needed, they were, that Turtle Island needed to have yurts. There's a minimum height requirement that said they have to be 24 feet tall, they wouldn't be able to do their yurts. And we're just like, well, we own the property. Things aren't going to go crazy if we take out the minimum height requirement. Now I don't know if they need the yurts, but...
Can I ask a clear question?
Yes, go ahead.
That was one of the things I had a question about was, right, and I was seeing the same thing, do they still need the yurts? And are we making that change specifically for this situation? And what are the implications of that minimum height elsewhere in our community? Or does it only apply to Country Club Road? You know, that I would think that we wouldn't want buildings that don't need that.
So figure 212 is just for the urban residential district, and the urban residential district only appears at Country Club Road. So if we make this change, it would only impact Country Club Road, which actually has two parcels, has Country Club Road and the one seven acre parcel that's with, both of which are undeveloped.
I just would hate to see us make a minimum height change that would have unintended consequences for...
Yeah.
We don't, we don't. Someone's here.
Okay.
I would, I agree.
Yeah, why don't you come up?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
So I'm Phoebe Stone from Turtle Island. We, now that, now that you have approved the amendment in the lease to add the additional square footage, we no longer need the lease, the, I'm sorry, the yurts. So that was one of the reasons why we continued to work with the planning on this is because we weren't sure that the city would approve the additional space that we were looking for inside. And so I totally understand the hesitancy to make that change. And so, obviously, you guys need to make the decision that's best for the city.
Thanks, Phoebe.
We would be interested in doing yurts in the future because it's a very cool idea, but also, you know, we understand the situation. Thank you.
So at the time, we warned the hearing, that wasn't a thing, so we can take that out after we're done with the quick review if you choose to adopt it without that change. The second set of changes that had come up with comments from the, the community, what we did, we looked at what were the public hearing, what were the DRB things that had kept coming up, that kept coming up as things that perhaps could be administrative or handled differently. One was steep slopes. And really, there was just a provision that goes in with steep slopes that anything over 30% would require a public hearing. And so even small things, somebody putting some steps on, you know, you might think about Northfield Street, and you've got these steep, and you want to put in some new steps or widen steps, well, it's going to impact 30% slope, now you've got to go to a public hearing. It's like, ah. So we put a minimum in there of 50 square feet. And the other thing we did was to, and this was with a lot of help from, from Tim, who you met earlier, and with Nick, is to our, if you've ever seen our other one, our slopes map, it looks, it's a fantastic looking map, but it's so detailed. It looks like a cut of meat with all the colors. So we narrowed, we limited the number of districts. Instead of having a whole bunch, we've gone to, there's below 15%, 15 to 30 and more than 30. So that way, it's a much simpler process, and we can look and do these calculations much easier. And we also went to a bigger, I may use the wrong term, a bigger resolution, higher resolution. So we end up with larger rasters. And what that does is that eliminates a whole bunch of small things. So before, we would be like, oh, there's a cellar, you know, a bulkhead into a cellar, and that shows up as a steep slope, and you're like, wow, this just, it picks up everything. And so by making the rasters bigger and re-running that analysis, the new slopes map leaves out a lot of these smaller areas that really aren't significant anyway. So the new slopes map should be easier for the public and developers to use, the new rules are simpler, and we'll continue to work on these. There are a number of recommendations that also came in that Planning Commission and the developers wanted to make changes on, but they kind of fell in that category of, this first one is about making the easy no-brainer fixes. These are the easy no-brainer fixes, and we're going to continue to work on them throughout the winter to change the hearing requirements and the engineered plan requirements in that also, those figures also appear in the next section, which is erosion control. So we simplified erosion control to match steep slopes. The next section is site plan standards. What we did for major and minor site plans is the, we increased the level. So you remember, we amended our zoning, and we said, we're going to eliminate density requirements up to six units. So if you've got a conforming parcel, you can have a six unit building on it, as long as you meet all the other parking and coverage requirements. But we didn't adjust the site plan requirements that have a number of extra conditions. And so usually, most plans, or regulations, including ours, says anything two or more has to have a site plan. Well, that adds a bunch of work in. So the request was, we should match to six or more, so site plans are now required for six or more, is the short version, or 8,000 square feet for congregate living, because we try to do equivalencies for congregate living. So that was the second change. The next change, next two changes were with subdivision-related issues. One was to create a minor subdivision. So right now, we have a two-lot subdivision or three-lot subdivision. That has to go to public hearing. They're pretty simple, as long as you, you know, if you're not building a road and there's, subdivisions don't really need public hearing processes. If you have the legal amount of land, if your property is three times the size, you want to break it into three lots, and you're not building any roads, it shouldn't need all the public hearings that are required. So there's still standards, but these will be administrative rather than having the hearings. And the second related piece is the sketch plan, the sketch plan has been removed as a requirement. So a lot of times now, you're doing a two-lot subdivision, you've got to go in, you've got to go to the DRB for a sketch plan, you come out, you get a report, you then got to go and reapply for a site for the final plan, and then you go in. So it's a much longer process. And that was probably the one when we looked at from 2018, 2017, to the present, those were the most of the hearings that we get on these sketch plan, site plan, or sketch plan subdivision, sketch plan subdivision, sketch plan subdivision. And so this will combine those, it will eliminate one of the hearings, and make that go much more efficiently for local developers, without losing the requirements. The requirements are still there. And the last piece, I believe, was, we went through and quickly updated, we had, we noticed there were a few areas where defined terms reference state statute, but then weren't the same as state statute. So we simply went through and struck them out. It said, this is as, as seen in this statutory reference.
Mike, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Is that right? Because that was the other area that I had a question about, was I took an interest in the definition of a historic sitter structure. And it struck me that most of the definition of terms actually did reference statute, statute, but that that one doesn't, or the statute was crossed out, and then, you know, lists, means a sitter structure listed either individually or as a contributing structure within a historic district in the National Register of Historic Places of Vermont, Register of Historic Places. You know, I wonder, I mean, I'll just say, I think we should be consistent in referencing the actual statute, which in this case would be Title 22 VSA Section 701 Subsection 6 that defines, defines historic structures in statute in Vermont, which is, I'm happy to read that, folks want to, but it just feels like we should be really consistent in that we're just going to be referencing the statute, we should in that as well. Because truthfully, that's not as expansive a definition that we really, as a community that cares about its historic character, that's...
It's not, and it's intentional. So that was, that was written that way intentionally, and we can take that for what it is. The reason it is written this way is because it is much cleaner and easier and quicker for us to administer. So we don't have to do a determination on whether a building by age, that's the 50, 50-year, year more with blah, blah, blah.
But you can, yeah, I mean...
What we did is said, if it's on the list, and we have in our GIS database a map, and it says all the conforming, and so when we get an application in that might be in, that's in our design review, and somebody's going to say, remove the front deck off of a house, we can, we just turn on the GIS data later, it's like, it either is contributing or it's not contributing. And they don't have to do any interpretation of whether or not it's historic or not, because if it's on the register, it's, it's, we've got ours in there.
Yeah, all buildings on the register are historic, but not all historic buildings are on the register.
Correct.
Right.
But we won't know as, as staff...
Right.
Whether an old building on the cornfield that's 300, that's 200 years old, but it's kind of falling down, is that historic or not historic?
But luckily, we have a state historic preservation office that can help with that determination of eligibility.
Yeah. And, yeah, and like I said, this is, that's a policy discussion. It's a policy discussion that has happened, and it was one that happened in the 2016-17 that we were working on, on these, these things. Is, did we want to have the expansive, or did we want to have it very confined to what's on the map? So that way, we can, we don't have to hold up a permit when somebody comes in to do a project to decide, is this project a historic building or not? And what we've done is to work with our historic preservation commission to get CLG grants to continue to do surveys. So as we do surveys, we continue to add new properties to that map and that database, which makes it easier for us to continue. So that's, that's the reason for that.
Totally.
We can change the policy depending on council.
I, I do think that that's a significant enough thing, that it would either warrant further discussion and not be one of the non-controversial interim zoning amendments that we make. And, you know, again, I just feel like for consistency with what we're doing here, if we're going to be referencing the state statute in every single definition, we should be consistent in that.
Yes.
And which is why I would make the recommendation that we reference the actual definition of a historic structure in state statute as opposed to one that...
I can, yeah, if you want, we can put that on the, on the list of, of things for Planning Commission to consider for this winter's discussion, or we can do it now.
I mean, I think that would be at the will of the council, but I would, I would think that that would be warranted.
Okay. So Mike, are you to the end of your presentation?
Yes, unless Meredith thinks I've missed anything significant?
Um, but I don't need you to...
Narrow it, Meredith.
Can I check something, and then come back to you?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Oh. Yeah, no, I was just thinking, big picture, if we missed something on the list of six. Okay.
You said, you said, big picture.
Okay.
It's in the packet.
I don't see it.
It was online.
It's under number 12.
Yeah, it was online.
Two things under 12.
Oh, do you need a hard copy of this?
It looks very short. One is Vincent Luzzi, and one is a cover letter. I don't have...
It should be in there.
This document.
Do you need...
Yeah.
I have a two-page cover letter, one page.
Hmm. That's weird. Well, while you're, Meredith, while you're looking, I'm going to now open a public hearing and ask if any members of the public have, have comments. And I'm looking, I do not see anyone online raising their hands. Steve?
And Mr. Meredith, if you could put me in the queue.
Okay, sure.
I'll be brief. I think it's a good start, but I went to the Planning Commission meeting where people commented, we need to really do a thorough evisceration... commented, we need to really do a thorough evisceration of the complexity of our development regulations, unified development regulations. It's bloated, it's out of date, it's unnecessary. It's, I call it the full employment act for Meredith and Mike Miller to have something so in-depth and complex that they're interpreted for people. But the, the Vince Aluzi letter I just read and call it to your attention, I think that's something that could make housing, you know, easier for people as long as you inform people that, you know, of course this is a floodway, but we shouldn't prohibit housing on first floors, especially these, those first floors didn't even flood. And we're, you know, he's prohibited from converting unused office space into an apartment by something that was done recently, just a couple of years ago, right? I think that was done in last year. We basically made first-floor residential conversions illegal. And the Aluzi letter says, make it legal again. Just make sure that people are warned and aware of the circumstances. I think that's sufficient. I think that's the heads up on the direction we need to go, but we're not going to get there, the path we're on.
Okay, thank you. James?
Thank you. I just wanted to maybe take pause and a little mini celebration, you know, as Council Member Gill talking about the city plan being a live and working document and Planning Commissioner Miller stressing like the planning commission heard a lot of comments and most of that was actually through the process related to the city plan. And I'll tip my hat, it would have been really easy for them to say, great, we'll redo the zoning regs and that's going to take the next nine to 12 months. But instead they leaned in and said, is there stuff that we can do now that will make a difference in our community and move us forward? So I just, it's working and I'm grateful.
Thanks, James. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to be heard? If not, I will close the public hearing. Now, Mike, this is one of those things where we do not need to have a second public hearing, right?
Correct.
All right. And Meredith, Meredith, do you have the answer to what you were looking for?
I, I think I just needed to understand from Ben if he was looking to make the changes that were in the red line for the historic structure definition or if you're wanting to change the, and have it be statute. Those are two different things. But the thing is with the language that's in here right now, the proposed red line, the statutory reference in here is the wrong reference all the time, no matter what. So that has to come out. And so my key, the key that we were in here is to keep the definition as it had been since we've been using this for the last several years and just strike the incorrect statutory reference. If instead you want to put in the correct, the actual statutory reference to how this term is defined, we need to know that because as the person implementing this, it completely changes how I review any application or historic structures, right? So, so I'm just asking the council to pick one or the other so that I know what I'm doing when an application comes in.
I'm having to verify that I can do that. I think that this should not be, I think this is some, an item that should be considered in a more kind of thoughtful approach by the planning commission moving forward. And personally, I believe that it should be defined as the correct statute, not the, not the definition that is here.
So that's, so you know, that's a substantive change versus necessarily like an emergency red line, the way I view it?
Right. I do too.
So, so that's.
He's saying, send it back to the planning. He's saying, send it back to the planning.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so just to be clear on.
Sorry to go down that rabbit hole.
No, that's okay. That's, that's useful. I think what, I think where we are with that is that that change is not happening now.
Yeah.
But it.
It's on our list.
It's on the list of things to be changed. With everything we've gone through, we have the proposal for changing the minimum height, item number one, which I think we've established maybe we don't need to do.
Correct.
And, and then we have all the others and I don't know if they're, I don't think any of those are controversial.
We, that, these, that was why they were picked was because we felt they're, they were broadly supported and staff felt that, that they're generally having just process changes.
And were you going to talk about the Aluzi letter because that's where I'm, where I'm going next? Okay, so go ahead.
So I just want like a big picture, like big picture. So this is very into the weeds. I am not a zoning expert. I've read all these documents, but I keep coming back to the so what? So what does this mean? Do we have any, like, what is this going to do? Like, what is the impact of these changes? Do we have a goal to what we're trying to achieve? I mean, we look at the history of where we've been in terms of housing. Is this, you know, quick changes that we want, like what are you trying to achieve by this? Are you trying to achieve 10 houses, like five apartments? Like what is the outcome? What is the impact? I, I don't understand what you're trying to do by changing all these details. So I would just like that 50,000-foot overview of your goals.
Yeah, sorry I wasn't clear on that. So the purpose of these changes is to make the permitting process more efficient. While we have over the years made the process, you know, like 10 times faster than it was in 2014, we still have, you know, room to make more efficiencies in the process. And what we asked developers were, where are your barriers to making projects happen? And they said, we're getting hung up time-wise. We could be getting these, these housing projects moving in, you know, 30 to 45 days, but instead they're taking 90 to 120 to 140 days because I've got to go through two rounds for, I'll begin, James. He buys a property, he wants to subdivide it in half and build a new house on the other property. So he buys the property, he then needs to have a hearing to have the sketch plan to subdivide the property. Then he gets that, then he's got to come back for the final subdivision so he can do that. And then he's got to come back because his project is more than two units. He's going to put three units on that new lot. Now he's got to go back for another 15-day hearing. Each one of these has a 30-day appeal window. So each one of these is a much longer process because each one has to go through the DRB. If we had his same project comes in, he buys the property and can administratively approve a subdivision of a two-lot subdivision, it means frontage, it means the size, good. We can approve that. He can then go through, get that approved. And then because we have raised the ceiling on site plan to six, he could come in with a three-unit, again, you still have to meet the requirements, but they're administrative. And we approve that permit administratively without a hearing. It has a 15-day appeal period. James could be on the road to work on that project, you know, 45 days after he buys the property because he can very quickly get through the permit process without really changing a lot of the rules. We've just simply said, these don't have to go to the DRB anymore, which requires a 15-day notice in the paper, which to get 15 days, you've got to be 21 days in advance. So it just adds a lot of time. And so the purpose of these was really to streamline the permit process for developers so that way we're taking out unnecessary steps, but not really, not really changing the regulations to say, well, we're just not going to, we're going to ignore those rules.
This is, if we have a goal of 75 housing units a year, this will help us get to that back.
Yeah. It doesn't have a number attached to it. It's just, we're listening to what our developers are telling us and they said, we could do more projects. Whatever that's going to result in, we don't know. We'll find out as we look at the numbers over the next year, do we see a bump in our housing numbers?
That's so, obviously that's all very good. And so, you know, once we make these changes, is there a plan to let people know how builder-friendly Montpelier is and come build in our city? Is there like, like how do you do that? How do you encourage developers to come because our process is so new?
I, I think that's going to happen by word of mouth over time. I mean, we've, we've had a reputation of, of having us, which has always shocked me that, that it's a slower process. But if we can get this process improving, the developer community is a tight community and the word is going to get out. And that's what we want is people looking at Montpelier and saying, you know, that's why we wanted to get this, also this growth center expansion. So that way people are out of Act 250. If people know, hey, I don't have to go through Act 250, I can get permits efficiently. We have standards. We're not, we're not throwing out all of our environmental standards. We're taking care and doing our job, but Meredith is taking care of most of that as opposed to the DRB having hearings. So that's our goal.
Jim?
I think it's great. I think the other thing. That is an advantage is it's going to be less time for people to come out against it. So I mean, and that's what stopped us on a lot of building is, you know, the more time people have to go against it, the more time they have to put something together to fight it. We're trying to move things along a little bit.
Well, I also, I know I attended one of the public planning commission meetings, I think my sister brought this up, was the, what was it, like the number of people that...
Oh, the appeals?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that part of this process or is that a state statute?
That's a state statute. We've, we've recommended that in the city plan and we've, we've recommended that to our lobbyist to, as those come up, having the state amend state law on who can appeal would, would be huge.
We do that.
Huge, huge, huge. Working with lobbyists, you gotta change state law.
We lobby.
How do we do that? Because that prohibits a lot of development if there's 10 random people that come and say, we don't want this, that's huge.
And the more time they have to do that, the more chances they can get people on board to help them.
Yeah.
So we're trying to, we're trying to hurry things along a little so we can get something done before everybody stops it.
And, but still following the good environmental regulations that we have as a community. So we're avoiding duplicative processes.
Getting something done.
Let's try, stay on track here because we also have this memo from Vince Aluzi about housing on the first floors. And I'll, I'll go do a little history and if you also want to, if you want to correct me or, or supplement it, that's fine, but the current state of affairs is because after the flood in 2023, there was immediately a couple of, at least one, maybe more than one proposal to convert commercial space that was on the first floor into housing and it now is housing. And, but it's, it was space that could be, could be flooded. And so you came to us and said, well, you know, this is dangerous because we're potentially, the zoning ordinance that we had at the time allowed housing to be developed on, in spaces that could be vulnerable to floods. And so now this proposal is to basically undo that. Is that?
That's the, that's correct. So the, the technical corrections to, to that are that, that appears in the river hazard regulations and we're looking at the interim zoning. So if council wants to give us direction to say, we would like to undo that, that would be something that would go into a separate process that we would have to do an interim change or a permanent change to the river hazard regulations. So the, the second piece is that one, we really wouldn't have felt was quick and non-controversial. We feel that's one that would be, should have some comments. And, you know, then, then the third one was, it was just, it's, I think we would have to have a lot of conversation about putting people at risk, especially in light of everything that we've had going on in this country over the past week, to put structures, to put people back into, we've been spending a lot of money, uh, working, getting grants to elevate houses and remove houses that are in the flood plain to make things safe. So the next flood, we may have commercial damage, but people will be safe and that's, that's our number one concern. Let's make sure people are coming out and they're safe. So if we're doing all this and then while at the same time we're elevating all these buildings, everybody behind us are taking all the commercial spaces that are below flood elevation to put people back in, it's counterproductive to reaching the goal of having safe housing. That would be my, that would be my, on my soapbox of, as a certified flood plain manager, I think it would be a poor policy to, to.
This doesn't, this doesn't seem like an easy conversation or decision.
Yeah.
Just to clarify though, we, we, we changed the zoning when you brought this up about a year ago and it, it wasn't described as first-floor property, it was described as property below the.
Below base flood elevation.
Below base flood elevation, right. So if you're on the first floor, but you raise that floor.
Yep.
Above the DFE, then you're all right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And that's the current code.
And that's the current code, yes. If you're, if you're above, if you're, if you have non-conforming space and you want to convert it from commercial to residential, you'd have to elevate that first floor above the DFE, the designed flood elevation, which is the 100-year flood plus two feet, which is what the transit center was built to and a number of other recent buildings are built.
City center, which didn't flood.
Yeah, everything that didn't flood, that is where they were.
All right. Well, I suggest we not take that up tonight, but it seems like people, I'm not hearing a lot of people on the council say they don't like these other proposals. So I suggest someone that I would entertain a motion to adopt all these changes that are before us, except for the one about the minimum height, because that doesn't seem to be what anyone's pushing for now.
That's what you said.
Ben?
Well, no, I was just, I, there is the bit about the definition of historic structures, you know, and so I don't really know how to resolve that because the, but it's something that needs to be, maybe as we look at the long-term.
That's what they said.
Yeah, okay. Great.
Okay, so Jim moved. Sal did you second or did?
Well, I thought we were exempting them both, but we can't do that or?
I think it's fine as long as they're looking at it in the long-term.
I'll second you, okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, there we are.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's see, do you get to go home yet?
No.
No, maybe not. Strategic planning workshop. We've got this set for 30 minutes. We'll see how this goes.
Okay, so I'm going to do my best to keep it to 30 minutes. So here we go. So in front of you, you have a template that were included in the packet, just for awareness. And so just to recap, what we did last time is we took a look at the results of the survey. We did select three priorities, which were housing, infrastructure and economic development. From there, we selected goals associated with those priorities. And then we were moving on to the exercise to select the strategies associated with those goals. And so also in the packet is sort of the results of that first item, which was housing. And so we put together, you know, just sort of a summary of what was on the sticky notes. Actually, it was exactly what was on the sticky notes and it hadn't been curated. So Ben was kind enough to take a look at that and curate that for us. So we've got an example of what it could look like. And so for tonight, what I want to recommend doing is finishing up the exercise. So going ahead and selecting three items within the timelines to go along with the goals for housing, not housing, sorry, economic development and infrastructure. And so putting the stickies up and so just taking, you know, probably 10 minutes apiece on each of the goals and just throwing up all the things that you want to get up there. I will also note. I will also note that on the templates, I did pull together some ideas for you to consider, um, that were based on a lot of the elements that were within the city plan. Um, so those strategies came from those associated goals. And so you might take some of them and actually just say, yeah, we'd like to use what's here. Um, and so once we do the exercise, I'd like to take all the stickies and curate them, kind of like what was done in Ben's example with housing, um, and then come back to you next time, um, with a plan. And so what I did is a rough sketch, it's very rough at this point, um, a summary document to kind of go through, you know, what we did, what our process was and sort of what that would look like, along with, um, key performance indicators. Um, so I'm not necessarily looking for you to take action on that particular item tonight, just sort of, um, for your consideration as we move forward, because that's likely kind of the structure that I would be using to bring back to you, um, in a future iteration, which would be at the next meeting on the 23rd. Uh, the other thing that I do want to note, um, is that based on what you select for strategies, once we complete the exercise, I would like to take a stab at, um, retooling the vision, mission, and values associated with this year, so that then we've got a complete year that kind of, you know, cross-references, um, what is contained within the plan. Um, just because that, that's what we did have, um, to kind of, uh, govern our, uh, former strategic plans since we would be doing sort of a, a refocus plan. I'd wanna refocus those items as well, just so we would have, um, that at the beginning. So what I'm proposing that we do right now is take a look at the templates.
Just the two.
Just the two for right now. Um, and then, you know, at the, the sort of balance of this exercise, I'd like to get your input on sort of the curated version of housing. Um, but just the two right now. So if we could take the next, you know, 10 minutes and maybe focus on economic development, so starting there. And so behind you, I brought back, because they were so fancy last time, um, our boards. And I realized that we do have two, um, counselors that are remote. Um, and so if they wanted to do the exercise by email, they could just email me their sticky notes virtually and I'll make sure that they're included in each of these plans. And so if you wanted to take a look at the economic development one to start, and what I, I've labeled them, it's a little bit small, but I've put each of the templates next to the timetables on the boards there. So everybody has sticky notes? I'm thinking 10 minutes. Go if everybody's game for that?
Go.
Okay, super. So we'll be back at about, uh, 9:30 or 9:32.
There we go. I was really tempted to put this into legal paper just to make it, make the print a little...
Drawing away ideas.
Yeah. There are some ideas that are... These are gold.
Gold, Jerry, gold.
So we're at 9:32. I want to give folks maybe a couple more minutes unless we're...
We'll just stick them up there.
Yeah, oh yeah, put them up. Do that one next.
Okay.
And so we're doing the infrastructure next, so if anybody wants to just get and jump on it, go for it.
Okay. I'm following the rules.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
There's an important jet dump in there to be used for the tour.
That one you don't need to sign. That's just me. Just a couple of more minutes on this, right?
We do, yep. We're almost at time.
All right, are we there?
I just had a question about format and number of words.
I think we're ready.
So my question about format. So I was a little confused, so when you have the column of the goals...
Yep.
What I was reading, like across, so I was going the goals and that line was correlated to that goal of the strategies. And then I would go across like this, and I got down, like I didn't know, like, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, and so initially, when sort of it set out with this table, that's where it was headed.
Okay.
But then when we started doing the exercise, the strategies weren't necessarily linked to the goals.
Oh, okay.
And so what I think probably one of the next steps will be is that then we will link them appropriately within the timeline.
Okay, thank you.
And so when I bring back a final version for you, it'll, I think, hopefully make a lot more sense. There might be some strategies that will comport with more than one goal. You know, and the implementation plans within the city plan are kind of like that. If you look at the stars, they may exist on multiple goals.
Yeah, that was helpful.
So like in my mind, I wanted the grids to line up, but that's not exactly how the exercise went. And so I, you know, was like, I can be flexible with that. I can accept that. And I think we can then work it into how it, you know, ultimately comes out in the end.
Yeah, I think in the end it would be nice to have like the goal and then across linear like 0, 3, 3, 6, 6, 9. You can have like multiple strategies under 0 or 3, it's like it's, so that's not all mushed together.
Yeah.
So that we can measure them, you know what I'm saying?
I do, but also kind of like, I think what you're saying about like the start thing is like you could number the goals and then in each of the strategies, like put the associated number, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure what we're working towards is something that we're going to use.
Oh, totally.
Right? And that we're going to check back on it, like, did we do that? How are we doing? Like, we're very clear, like it's so clear, there's no question about what we're working towards.
That makes a lot of sense. And then one of the other suggestions, I think, I think you might have had this suggestion, was to then take the strategy and link the KPI to it. So then you know exactly how you're going to, you know, achieve that. And then it'll all add up into the goal and then it'll sort of then roll up even further into the longer term city plan. And so with each year, it kind of, you know, grows. So I think what I would like to do, then if you're up for it, I'd like to take these stickies from tonight's exercise and integrate it into the templates. I'll send out sort of the template with just the results from what you've done. So you can see all of the stickies all together. And then I'd like to take Ben's model and curate the other two priorities and then work that into a plan at the KPIs and then present you with a plan. One of the other things that I would like for that plan to have is, one of the examples that we looked at was tying sort of the council work plan and the staff work plan. So within each of the goals, you would know sort of what council decision items there are and then what staff work plan items we have. So then you can kind of see what the distinction is between the roles and responsibilities, which I think is something that we've kind of talked about throughout this process that maybe wasn't clear in former versions of our strategic plan. So hopefully it'll be really usable and sort of easy to take along.
Yeah, what I tried to do with the housing one is just took, Kelly's, as she said, was uncurated, right? It was like everything that we had given and all, I didn't add anything. All I did was look for ones that were redundant and strike those. And then I also struck ones that seemed to me weren't actually council responsibility, right? Like, I think the things that are left on the list now are like ones that we actually have something to do with. And I just did it for point of reference, just of like, I think that's what we should be striving for. It's like things that we actually have control over and then like not having a bunch of things that are redundant. And then actually trying to somehow like strategize around timeline of like, you know, let's do an analysis of an issue before we make a decision of an issue or then before we figure out how we're going to pay for these.
All right.
Great. So what I'd like to do then is bring this back for another workshop with a draft plan based on these exercises to consider. And, you know, and then we can either, you know, modify, amend, but you'll at least have something in your next packet to look at. I'll also have staff people look at that and make sure that it's feasible on our end. But we'll, and then I'll also come back, like Kate mentioned, with sort of the mission, vision, value statement, just to align with what we're doing specific to these priorities. So I'll bring this back next time.
We're making progress on this.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, folks, next up, the resolution honoring the city manager. And this is something that I wanted to have on the agenda for a couple of reasons. And it was very important that we get it on tonight's agenda, I think. And one reason was because it's just the right thing to do for the city to make a formal statement of, to honor Bill's 30 years of service. It's a really big deal. Not that many people stay 30 years in a job these days. And provide 30 years of outstanding service to the city of Montpelier is worthy of significant recognition. And so I thought that was, it was very important to, for us as a council, to make this statement to honor Bill Fraser. And secondly, is, you know, some of what's been gone on regarding the way Bill ended his career here has been, has been pretty contentious and controversial. And I think it's, it'd be a good thing to take action and put this behind us. To take, take action in a positive way and take an action that is not acrimonious and moves, moves forward into the future. And so for that reason, as I said, I think it was important to put this on the agenda. And I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as in the packets. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, you don't already make a motion.
Okay.
So are you going to make a motion that's here?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then let's vote on that. I'm going to make a counter motion after, but... Okay, I would like to amend it if it's okay with Ben. I would like to take out number two and replace it with the wording of the mayor. We'll give, we'll award Bill a ceremonial key to the city and a plaque to go on his wall to honor his 30 years and accomplishments. But strike what we have for two, but leave the rest of the resolution the way it is.
Is there a second?
My second, Ted.
Okay, now we have the motion to amend the motion. Discussion is in order on, on the motion. Anybody want to speak about that, about the amendment?
I'll just, you know, I just want to acknowledge the complexity of the moment. And I appreciate different points of view on this issue. I think we're all really committed to moving forward in a positive fashion, as you described, Jack. You know, I recognize there can be disagreement of opinion. I believe that this is an opportunity for the council to be, you know, magnanimous and show generosity of spirit and move on and honor 30 years of public service, which is important and I think signals of respect to our staff. I also acknowledge there are multiple ways to do that. I believe that naming a room after 30-year city manager doesn't cost the city anything and it's appropriate. But I would again say I respect that there might be differences of opinion on that. But for that reason, Jim, I'm, I'm, I would vote against an amendment of the motion and advocate for the original motion, naming of the conference room.
Carrie?
Yeah, I think this is very appropriate and called for. As, as Jack said, there are not many people that stay in a job for 30 years, but especially not city managers. It's pretty unusual. And the, to recognize the long-term dedication and contribution to the city, regardless of the circumstances under which that, that employment has ended. I think we can still acknowledge tremendous contribution for 30 years. And I think it's really important to do so. And I also respect that there are different opinions about how best to do that. I think that naming a room after him is a great way to kind of demonstrate a legacy. And as Ben said, it doesn't cost the city anything. So I am not in favor of this amendment because I think that's a pretty good way to show that recognition. But it's, of course, not the only way we could do it.
Carolyn?
Yeah, sorry for my voice. I'm pretty sick. I support the amendment because, from my opinion, if we want to name a specific place in the city building, it should be given after a community member who really did a lot of things for our community, contributed a lot without expecting anything in return. So as a principle, that's why, you know, that's where I am at. That's why I will amend, I will support the amendment. And I agree with Ben and Carrie and Jack. It is important to show our appreciation to Bill for his 30-year of service. Thank you.
I guess I support Jim's amendment because I think it, I think it expresses the sentiments for more of my constituents.
And I think it is, key to the city is just not enough in terms of Bill's vast contributions to the city. And I think that one of the real benefits of naming the conference room after Bill is that it would then be a, be a statement and reminder to other people who've come to the city hall, come to conduct business and have meetings there. It would be a memorial to, to the work and contributions Bill made to the city. So that's why I think that having, having a physical memory right there in city hall is, is an important thing for us to do as part of this. Any further discussion on the amendment?
I did.
Council members, anything? Okay, okay, Steve.
I was totally unaware of this until just a minute ago because I don't, didn't have time to study the packet early. I was also unaware of the proposed amendment, but I want to support the amendment. I don't recall offhand any particular other rooms that are named after anybody who've been great leaders in our city. Bill was a divisive figure and I think if we're really going to move on, we should not further entrench and/or alienate members of our community. I just saw an email from Kelman, you know, this is what we do. We, we push people out of public participation. There are many people who think that, who wouldn't want to go to that room if you name it after Fraser. You know, it's a stench. And I think that the key and the plaque are perfectly adequate. And I think that the key and the plaque are a perfectly adequate way to do that and allow people to reside in their own opinions without creating that enduring conflict in city hall.
Anything, any further comments? All right, we'll do a roll call. This is on, um, Jim's proposal of amendment. Ben?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Palin?
Yes.
All right, the amendment passes. Now we're ready for the, uh, so the proposed resolution has been amended. And, uh, for anyone who's, uh, watching out there wants to hear what it is, I will read it. Resolution honoring Bill Fraser for 30 years of service to the city of Montpelier. Whereas Bill Fraser has dedicated an extraordinary 30 years of service and commitment to the city of Montpelier. And whereas throughout his three decades of service, Mr. Fraser has demonstrated exceptional dedication and a profound commitment to the betterment of our community. And whereas his tireless efforts and expertise have significantly contributed to countless initiatives, projects, and the overall well-being and progress of the city of Montpelier. And whereas the city council wishes to express its deepest gratitude and acknowledge Mr. Fraser's profound impact and lasting legacy, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Montpelier, Vermont, that one, the city council hereby extends its sheer appreciation and profound gratitude to Bill Fraser for his outstanding and dedicated service of 30 years to the city of Montpelier. Two, I don't have the exact language in recognition of his exceptional commitment and service to the community. The city manager shall present, uh, Bill Fraser with the key to the city and, uh, a plaque to be displayed in his home. I don't remember, I think that's close enough to the language. Okay, I should read it. Yeah.
The mayor will award Bill, can you hear me? What? Oh, okay, cool, okay. Uh, the mayor will award Bill a ceremonial key to the city and a plaque to go on his wall to honor his 30 years of work and accomplishments.
And three, this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of this meeting as a permanent testament to Bill Fraser's invaluable service to the citizens of Montpelier. Then we'll have to fix the date, but that's the, uh, resolution. Any discussion of the resolution? Are we ready for a vote on the resolution? Make a roll call. Ben?
Aye.
Jim? We're voting on the resolution as a whole. Yeah. Sal?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Palin?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimously adopted. Thank you. City council reports, we've been starting with you, Ben, all night, so you're up.
Sorry, I'm gonna be a bit. I wanted to just, uh, provide an update on, um, a few different things. One is that, uh, Carrie and I did confer around the housing committee and would love to connect with Jim and Sal about the homelessness task force. You know, we, we had a conversation where we really thought about, actually, we believe that we're happy to talk with others about that it is important to actually keep them separate with a plan though for coordinated check-ins, maybe quarterly check-ins and like just greater collaboration between the two committees. But our plan is to reconvene the existing group, review the charge of the committee with them, which actually seems like a really appropriate charge, and then empower a chair and just kinda get the ball rolling again and really just try to keep an open line of communication with council to make sure that we're all on the same page. The other update I'd like to provide is just on 87 State Street, the federal building. We had a meeting yesterday, again, with General Services Administration and Secretary Curley from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development and, uh, real estate redevelopment folks that we're working with. Uh, we continue to negotiate with them around, uh, negotiated sale, looking at, uh, really due diligence on the building. We'll actually be touring the building, uh, next week. Uh, they've also provided us with a number of documents, uh, related to the condition of the building, including a 2,400-inch phase-one environmental. Ben's excited, we'll be posting it on the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience website so you can dive into it. But I would say, you know, again, we're just pursuing to try and shape a positive outcome for that building. Again, there's no city funds involved in this at this point. It's purely philanthropic funds, but really trying to ensure that this building can be an economic asset for our downtown, which really needs an economic asset for our downtown. Uh, and I just really wanna acknowledge and appreciate Secretary Curley's leadership in stepping up and, uh, kinda making this happen. And then I also just wanna say that, uh, I don't remember what day this was, Kelly, Tuesday? One day? Monday. Monday, uh, I was able to be in a roundtable, uh, that the Montpelier Commission, um, hosted with Senator Welch, uh, who's unveiling a new, uh, bill, uh, around, uh, reforming FEMA and really putting more, um, power in the local hands and trying to cut red tape around reimbursement and different services that FEMA could provide. And Kelly was actually key part of that roundtable and provided, I thought, a really excellent perspective on what it's like for a city of Montpelier to continue to struggle with FEMA. And I think, uh, she did a great job of describing the challenges and, um, representing the city. I was proud to be associated with her in the meeting. So thank you, Kelly.
Jim?
Uh, I just wanna talk about the meeting that Sal and Kelly and I attended with a couple of the business owners, emergency meeting, and, um, they, you know, there was a lack of communication. I'm not, I don't know who it really applies to. It just was a lack of communication. It created a lot of anger. And, uh, we're gonna try to move up the schedule to try to get some night work done. It's probably gonna cost us a little more. But every day, we got, we heard from a couple of them that every day is critical and that there are some people that have closed down and they don't know if they're coming back. And I went on the third and talked to a number of business owners who were there and I don't think most of you have any clue of how fragile most of them are and on the edge. They're losing 35 to 43% from last, the previous year. And, uh, a lot of them are wondering why they wanna stay here. The other thing I wanna just say is, um, three of us, four of us went to the Afghan meeting. And it was interesting and intriguing, but also unsettling and a little, uh, uncomfortable. It would've been nice, I think, if we would've been given kind of a do and don't list of culture do's and don'ts because, I mean, within three minutes, I made two different, I made two mistakes and every one of us, except you, Jack, got moved to a different position that we sat in, which I, I soon realized, you don't wanna be early for them. It's okay to be late. And you wanna find out where they want you to sit because they're very particular on seats. Very cultural, haha, learning experience.
Thanks, Jim. Sal?
I just wanna report on the, uh, housing task force. We've been discussing it and we're gonna have, Jim hasn't had an opportunity to meet, we're gonna do that in, uh, the regular meeting next Wednesday with, with them, this coming Wednesday. And, um, but they're, I think they've reached the same sort of conclusion that they're better off as a separate group, they're just not sure that they're a task force anymore. And they're leaning toward either, uh, requesting to be a full committee or perhaps even becoming an independent group in a more regional operation with, in conjunction with Barry, Barry Town, Berlin, given that the, the issue is regional. So it's been a, you know, uh, far-reaching discussion about, you know, what the next step is. So we'll, we'll have, we'll have more for you after Wednesday.
Thanks, Sal. Adrian?
Um, yeah, so just as the two-year, two-year anniversary is tomorrow of our town flood, I just wanted to thank Chris for, Chris Lombra for stepping up to help our homeowners in District One. Um, he had to come up to speed, learning all about FEMA and all these different things about elevations and buyouts and the very complexity of homeownership of, you know, homes that have been flooded out. It's very, very, very complex. And, you know, Josh started this project and, you know, got them to a point and Chris jumped in and I have heard nothing but very positive things from the homeowners that have called me and thanked him for being very communicative and open and, you know, it's a very, very, very difficult process. But we are moving along and happy to report, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have some closing dates. One, a couple are coming for, um, buyouts, which is very, very exciting. So two years later, we have some dates for buyouts and we are moving slow but steady with many, many bumps in the road for our elevation, um, on State Street. So that is moving along. The house will be elevated, hopefully fingers and all toes pro this fall, but, um, we haven't, um, have a date set for that yet. So I just wanted to thank Chris for just being so open and just keeping me up to date, keeping all the homeowners up to date. And it's just, you know, these are people's lives, it's their homes and it's, um, something that the city, you know, is responsible for helping them. And I just really wanted to thank you for doing that.
Thanks. Carrie?
Yeah, I just wanna report that the, um, the committee to talk about our sanctuary city status and look into that has had its first meeting. And we are gonna be connecting with Burlington and Winuski to hear more about how they are implementing this and what they have learned and, um, what they're doing. And then we're gonna, we're also talking about public outreach and to make sure that people understand what is a sanctuary city? What do we mean by that? And that what can we, you know, and to, uh, make sure that people know what their rights are and that we are doing everything we can to support our community. So our next meeting is July 18th. And thanks to Palin for pulling that together.
Thanks, Carrie. Palin?
No report, thank you.
Oh, boy, you don't sound good. I don't have much, uh, thanks to, uh, Montpelier Alive and, uh, all the city employees and volunteers for last, uh, for this year's July 3rd. It was, uh, it was, it was a weird, uh, weird thing because those of us who were there for the, representing the city council, me, uh, Jim, Ben, and Sal were out there carrying the banner. And from where we were, where the parade was going, just flying, just like a normal parade, but, but we were like the end of it. We were, we were, uh, entry four in the list and there were maybe one or two after us, but we got to the end and there was nobody following.
Felt like a metaphor.
It was, it was really strange and, and very disappointing because people, uh, people love the event every year. And, uh, of course, as I was walking across the statehouse lawn, I was hearing the, uh, thunder, it was obvious that it had to be done. But, uh, we'll be back next year and we'll have the event tomorrow night, commemorating the, um, flood two years ago. And, uh, we are not expecting, uh, flooding tomorrow. And, uh, I think that's what I've got. City clerks report?
Uh, great to be here tonight. It was, it was fun. I don't have anything to report.
City managers report?
So I've got just a few things for you. So the first thing is something that's really good. It's, uh, you got an email earlier, um, for our above and beyond awards for June. Um, and we are really pleased to be able to report that we've got, um, several winners and they're all really good instances of city employees doing great work. And so it's one of the things that I love the most about being able to do this job is, you know, these things, nice things. Um, so I'm just gonna share a little bit about them, just for the public so that they can kinda hear, um, what they did. So, um, Jake Larrabee and Quinn Monkeys, um, were involved in a pretty delicate situation, um, with a suicidal individual and they were able to save that life. And so that's pretty impressive. And so it's just some, some of the things that we do every day, they really went above and beyond there. We've got somebody from, um, DVW who really went above and beyond to work on getting through the streets up and ready for the July 3rd event and getting the painting done. We've had some really wet weather, um, and so it's been tricky to get all of the crosswalks and things painted, so he came in overnight to do that. So that's pretty impressive. And then we've got somebody from the water department, um, who has really been doing some good work, um, just, you know, monitoring water quality and just being super positive. It's one of our new employees. And so I'm really happy to be able to share that, um, because they are doing great work. We've got great city employees and this award is just, I think, something that, um, we're really happy to be able to do. And there are many, many other things that our employees do every day. So I just wanna, um, congratulate those folks and say thank you and just share that publicly. And, um, okay. So the next thing I've got is, so we do have a meeting next week. And so that'll start at 5:30, um, with our capital plan, uh, meeting. Um, and so in the packet tonight, uh, you did appoint, uh, three folks to that, um, committee. And so it's Carrie, Ben, and Jim. And then it's, uh, the city manager, DVW director, finance director, and deputy director that typically also sit in on that. And so we'll be giving you a briefing of where we're at at this point in the year. And so what we're, um, reconstituting is bringing back, uh, you know, two-part series for this committee. Typically, it meets around budget season and then it meets, it historically had met around this time to give you sort of a status of where we are with projects. And so there are a couple of different things that we'll report out on so that you can, you know, hear a little bit about the projects, but then also, oh, what's on tap? And we've got some results from our, um, paving condition index. So we'll be able to see kind of a sneak preview and what you can expect during our budget deliberations. And also, um, working through, we've got a three-year plan currently, but we are developing the five-year plans that is in concert with the city plan, uh, as we move forward. So I'm just gonna put that out there. Um, and then we will be meeting with the consultant, um, for the city manager hiring process starting at 6:30, uh, and he will be here.
At 11:00, right?
Yep, to meet the view.
Great.
So, um, that's happening, um, all next week. Um, and then the last thing I wanna mention, um, because I wanna get your take on how to handle this one, is, um, we, uh, have gotten several really qualified applicants, um, for the Economic Development Specialist position. And we have, uh, gone through the first round of interviews. Um, we have a pool of a couple candidates that we would like to bring back for a second round. Typically, the city manager would hire that position. Probably brief you on that. But because I am the acting city manager per charter, um, those appointments need to be made and confirmed by you. And so, um, what I'd like to do is maybe have an executive session so I can just brief you on the candidates and then bring it back on consent for 23rd. I just wanted to make sure that that sounded like a good process, um, to do that.
Yeah.
Great.
Can I ask you a question, Kelly, about who, um, when do they have to be in for? I was told that I can make a nomination for employee. And it's to Tanya?
Yes.
And what is the submitting date?
So we do the need time, so they're kind of rolling.
Oh, at any point, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. That, I think we're done and we are adjourned at 10:19 PM.